We're having some sound issues.
I don't know if I can handle that.
I don't know, it's gonna be quiet.
Yeah, Shar, right up Shar's back.
That's right.
Get him with hers back.
Well, I'll call the meeting in order and I'll welcome everyone to the Emory Board of Education Regular Meeting this day, June 26, 2023. And I'd like you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the raising of justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we will have our consent agenda items.
I had the vouchers this month, so I would make a motion to approve those.
And a second?
Second.
Which one? Joe? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? There we go. Uh, we have no community comments this evening, so we'll jump into the administrator reports.
Okay, not a lot of things going on student-wise. Of course, you guys were all there for graduation. Thanks whoever ordered the weather. It was a beautiful day. FFA had another wonderful state convention, many awards and high places, special shout out to Courtney Glenna. First place in the dairy placement proficiency. Shar, is that correct?
That's great.
Beat out a heck of a lot of people for that, so it's a pretty big honor. Um, and then, I know some of you guys have been peeking in, but it, we are full-on remodel, 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 and wear a hard hat and vest, hi-vis vest if you come to the school. Otherwise, call and we'll meet you at the door.
Bring her on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had a neon green shirt the other day, so I didn't have to wear my vest.
Thomas?
I want to say that, okay. Um, at the middle school, we just got done with the crisis manual meeting a couple, about eight or nine days ago. And we were taking a look at the crisis manual and making some adjustments to try and be, um, up to speed on all of the, uh, plans in case we have a crisis situation. And again, those are things that we review with students and practice and monitor throughout the year. Uh, summer school, uh, is heavy into it. We're in our third week. And it's gone really well. I want to thank Laura Shogren, who's done a really nice job coordinating summer school and all the teachers and students and parents and everyone involved. Our band has been pretty active. We have, um, started out marching with the Memorial Day Parade, which is, for a lot of those kids, their first experience with a parade. It's a pretty short one, but, um, but a great, a great, a great parade and a, and a great reason to, to be out and memorializing that day. And then we had, uh, the Clayton and the Clear Lake Parade. So, I want to thank Ms. Rhodes Lundgren and the band director and all the kids and parents again, and the band boosters who make everything happen. Uh, middle school gym floors are being sanded and resurfaced, and it's pungent. And, and it's, uh, they'll be out of commission for a little bit more, in a couple more weeks. And so that's kind of put a, uh, a cog into some of the summer school plans and sports practicing and things, but something that necessarily had to be done. And then we have a group of teachers out at the Solution Tree PLC Conference today. Uh, it's today and tomorrow, and they come back on Wednesday, and that's why we have some of the administrators aren't here. They'll be taking, uh, a group of, uh, teachers and staff out to understand that process. Um, that's pretty much the majority of my information.
So your crisis manual committee, that's encompassing the whole campus?
No, we have a district-wide committee that meets.
Okay.
And that involves not only, um, administrators, but also, um, you know, medical professionals, but all, and, um, the police and, um, health professionals, just a lot of different people that talked about what, what's going on. I think there's, you know, school board members that are meeting with that. And we take a look at global things. Then each building has teams that meet to just say, okay, in case we had a situation in this building, where are checkpoints and who's doing what and making sure everyone understands and so that. Um, and we always tweak that every year to make sure everything is up to date and, and, and actually tweak it more often than that even, just to make sure that we're, um, prepared. And that covers everything, not just a lockdown situation, but, um, you know, uh, fire drills and tornado situations and evacuations too.
Thank you.
Yep.
And that's all we got?
That's all we got.
Nope, that's just. They can go through those if they want to.
And then we get Lisa Voison for our informational items.
Hi. We have Baird Financial here, uh, to talk to you about, uh, funding options in regards to athletic facilities. Uh, feel free to ask questions. We're not making the assumptions and everyone knows what they know. They've got a lot of knowledge. Um, so feel free to ask those questions and they've got some information they're gonna share with you that'll answer many of your questions upfront. So, you're up.
Yeah, and feel free to, is, am I on? Can you hear me?
Just speak loud and.
Okay, I'll speak loud. Um, I'm Lisa Voison from Baird. I know a lot of you guys, very familiar faces. Uh, it is my last board meeting. I'm retiring from Baird in four days. And so, um, Debbie Burnett is gonna be stepping in. She's been with Baird for 15 years. She knows what she's talking about and you're gonna find out super soon. Um, so I'm gonna let Debbie do the presenting tonight and I'm just gonna pipe in if I need to.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. Um, so Lisa, uh, when I was planning to come, it was really important to her that this was her last board meeting, so she was very excited to come and see you and have, have you be her last one. So, um, I'm excited to get to present with you or to you tonight. And so my, our goal tonight, before we even dive into it, is really to help you know about the borrowing process in Fund 38. You just passed a referendum-approved debt and this is different. And so at the conclusion, I'm hoping that, uh, we pulled from this that there isn't a tax impact to this kind of borrowing, which is different than the other one. And because you're replacing some debt that's retiring, there really isn't a budget impact either. So I'll, I'll talk about the nuances of that. And then the third part is to help you know that the timing, should this move forward and what parts you would be involved in. So those are the three key things that I'm hoping you glean from that. We have some agenda items to fit through that and some nuances that I think are important to you, that you know as we move forward, so I'll make sure to, to highlight those. And I'll try not to take a lot of time on your summer evening. I know board meetings in the summer are, are, the time is precious. So, um, we'll review the facility options. We'll talk about your existing debt and why some of those pieces fit in that I first started with. And then we'll conclude with that timing, so you know what next, next steps will be. So just some general concepts about financing facility needs and projects in schools. So we have many needs that exist, whether it's as simple as replacing the flooring or the carpet in a boardroom, to, uh, creating athletic facilities, to remodeling an entire building. And depending on the cost of the project and the timing, it will determine whether we look to use operational funds, such as maybe replacing carpet, or maybe even operational funds can finance a boiler being out, smaller projects. But when we get to larger projects, we need to look to borrow funds, whether it be the size of the project itself or the timing of the project. So for instance, if, we could piecemeal sections of roof and do them at three, $400,000 at a pop. Or we could do an entire building roof all at one time because they're here. And so when we use operational funds, we're looking at our operational budget. We talk about our Fund 10, so our annual budget. Um, we look at Fund 41 or 46. You have a Fund 46, saving for long-term needs. Sometimes districts will dip into fund balance. Typically not recommended to dip into fund balance, but occasionally if it's a one-time project and there's a purpose, we can. When those projects are so expensive though, or, or accumulate, we look to borrowed funds. The referendum borrowing is what was done this spring and, um, that's exciting to see that come, come into fruition. Tonight, we're going to talk about Fund 38 borrowing or non-referendum debt. So this debt, you will not go to the community and ask, but because of that, you'll need to use your operational funds to pay for the projects. And that's why we say no tax impact, because we aren't levying extra. It's fitting within what we have. So it's like we're using operational funds, but we're doing a loan to pay it so that we can do it all at once. So, uh, I know this is familiar to many of you, but just to make sure we all start on the same page. Just a reminder that the state controls a more, a majority of our operational revenue through the revenue limit formula. So they created a formula back in 1993 that told districts how much revenue they would get for operations through the state aid, the equalization aid, and then the tax levy. And so prior to revenue limits, districts could just add the cost of projects and, and move along. But since then, districts have been given this pot of money and said, if you want a balanced budget, you need to live within your means. You can go to operational referendum, like you did back in 17, to increase that amount. And, but through that, here's your operational revenue, fit your expenses underneath. Okay? And so that's, that's why, um, we get asked oftentimes, well, why, why don't you just take care of this or why didn't you before? The answer is we're living within these revenue limits. This revenue limit authority is divided between what the state provides us and then what's leftovers for the local taxpayer. We'll go to the next slide and we'll connect that. So remember that bubble. So here's your school tax levy from this year, uh, 2223, this year for only four more days. Um, pretty soon I'll be sending John an email that says, "Happy fiscal new year." It's an exciting time in the business office. Um, and so come October, you'll set next year's levy. Um, but just, just a reminder, and once made flip-flops even to celebrate fiscal new year, not everyone got as excited as I did. Um, but, um, your total school levy, and these are your numbers from 2223, is made up of three components. Now, these are the three main components for all school districts, but not all school districts levy into them. So for instance, not all districts have a community service fund. You do, and you levied into it this year. Referendum-approved debt, many districts have referendum-approved debt. This is where you'll levy the repay, your referendum. That's the repaying the loan to do the projects. The revenue limit, we put a red box around it because it's controlled by the state formula. This is where Fund 38 lives, this debt that we're talking about tonight. So you're going to use dollars in this bucket to repay, which is why we, we say it doesn't have a levy impact. Because if you didn't levy it into Fund 38, it would go in Fund 10. Am I explaining that okay? So far, so good?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Next slide, please. So one last thing to differentiate Fund 39 and Fund 38, so referendum versus non-referendum. And normally, we probably wouldn't dive into so much detail on the difference between the two. But because you just went through a referendum, we thought it really important to differentiate and to clearly say, this is what you just did, this is what you're looking to do. So in Fund 38, our non-referendum debt, the statutes say that school districts can, without asking their voters, borrow money in order to do projects. You do a loan, and the, the difference between paying for it, what the, the project, you're still using operational funds, but you're able to spread out the cost over multiple years, making some of these projects more affordable. We levy for it within the revenue limit, so again, no direct tax impact. And they said, if you do this, you have to use operational funds, and we're going to limit it to a million dollars so that you don't use up too much of your operational funds in order to pay it back. But you can do more than a million if you give the community an opportunity to petition and say, "We don't want you to do this." And it's extremely rare for that to happen, but it is there and will be part of this process as we're talking about three million dollars in the project tonight. So we're asking for these funds without going to referendum, but the community does have an opportunity to come forward and say, "Please rethink about that." Please rethink this process.
And if they, if I can just step in, if they do submit a petition signed by more than 20% of the electors in the last gubernatorial election, you would have to go to referendum to borrow the funds for these projects. It's really important. So because you're borrowing more than a million for these athletic projects, you have to go through what's called the 30-day petition process. Something new for you guys. You've never done this. Um, I've done it probab, I do it probably five times a year with school districts. Doesn't happen very often. A lot of districts just borrow a million dollars. Then they don't have to go through that petition process. Make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
How often, how often can you go after the million dollars? Is it every year based on the budget or is there a time limit once you've used it?
It's a million dollars of principal outstanding. So every year you pay, make a principal payment, it essentially reopens the access. But if you do go through the, the petition process, this project, the scenario we're talking, we're going to share with you tonight is three million. If you go through the petition process, that three million then does not count against that million borrowing. So you could go back later and borrow a million if you needed to.
And then if the following year, if you have a hundred thousand, you can go, go borrow a hundred thousand. As long as you have a million dollars or less outstanding, you're, you can, you don't have to go through the petition process for a new borrow. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah. It's a little tricky. Call us and ask us and we'll.
Yeah, that's, that's where we get involved.
Yeah, yeah.
So just real quick, um, as we start looking at new debt, a common question, so we're trying to anticipate the questions you might have. Common questions are, well, what debt do we have outstanding now? And we call that your existing debt. So here's your Fund 39 borrowing, just approved via, um, referendum. And then here are your Fund 38 issues. So these are the non-referendum issues. And you can see that two of them are getting paid off in the next couple of years. This one just a few years after. So the proposal is as these retire, that we replace it with the new borrowing. And we have a bar graph that shows this, this coming up. And that's why we say it won't have a budget impact, because we're just going to replace what you've currently been paying.
And we did a little research prior to the meeting. The first one is actually, was paid off in March of '23, so that's actually zero.
Okay, yeah, we were talking about that.
Yep, so that one, there's no, um, debt there at all.
Okay.
The second one from Wisconsin is a safety and security loan, and the third is the land across the street. So that's what those three are, the first of which is no longer there. So it's really only two.
And when does that, um, Wisconsin loan mature? When are we done with that?
Uh, well, this, it's actually less than that. It's about 60, because there were two payments, uh, further along than the 75. And it, uh, is done in 2024.
Something that's just a typo in there. Does interest rate 2023?
Yeah.
Final payment.
It's 24.
Okay, that's what I was just.
Yep.
Fall, fall of 24.
Yeah. So if you had a project that was worth $600,000, you wouldn't have to go through the petition process. Because you, say you had the 256 outstanding, you know, as long as you standard a million total, you don't have to go through the petition process. We didn't, we're not in that situation, so that's why we'd be going through that.
Another common question that comes up is, do we have the capacity to borrow the additional funds? So besides the million-dollar exemption, are we as a school district limited to what we can borrow and does this fit in? And the answer to that question is yes. Um, K-12 school districts in Wisconsin can borrow up to 10%, almost all. Um, but you, one of them can borrow up to 10% of their equalized value. And so after the, even after your referendum debt, you still have used less than 30% of your capacity. So you have plenty of capacity remaining, uh, to do this project. So we're checking and making sure all the statutes are followed as you go through this process as well. Okay. I'll try to do better. Thanks. I'm a former teacher, so I, I tend to, to migrate that way. Uh, another common question is, we've heard interest rates have risen. Um, what does that mean for our market? And the answer to that question is, although they have risen, it's still a historically near-low interest rate environment. And so in our forecasts, we have incorporated a conservative interest rate, so we aren't assuming we borrow today. We're putting in a cushion so that if in, interest rates do go up. It's always better when we come back to you saying it's better than we thought, uh, than, rather than it's higher. But the, the important thing is, is that, um, in the tax-exempt world, still favorable interest rates for financing projects such as yours. Okay, so for those of you who like numbers, we wanted to make sure we included the detail. For those of you who don't care for numbers as much, I have a few highlights for you. Um, first is, um, this is an example of, of how we create a schedule, when districts come to us and ask for a scenario for borrowing a certain amount. So this is $3 million. We don't need to lock in the dollar amount for another few months. And so it won't have to be 3 million come the process moving forward. Shoot, I want to go over there and point, so I'll just have to point. Um, also, it shows, and we have a bar graph that shows this as well. So for those of you who don't care for the detail of the numbers, just stick tight for a moment. But we have your existing Fund 38 debt service. So you can see in that third column that this year's debt service levy was 230,000. It's scheduled to drop down to about 100,000. And then for a few years, have 55,000 left, and then it would go away. And that's based on what's scheduled. So you as a district could choose to, um, levy and pay early on that if the dollars were available, and that of course would eliminate those payments, just like paying early on a, a home mortgage, for example. And so how we've designed this financing plan is we've wrapped around that. Meaning, we don't have a majority of the principal starting until a few years later, so that, uh, our goal being to create level payments. So this year, and I'm looking at the combined 38 debt service column. Um, this year, the levy being two, scheduled levy being 231,000. Skip the dip for a second. Uh, in this financing plan, using a four-and-a-half percent interest rate, the payments would levy out at about 250,000. And that, that's what we mean by a, a neutral budget impact. We're just replacing the 230,000 with 250,000 for those payments. That hiccup year, you'll see on the bar on the next slide. We just encourage you, uh, as you move forward to, um, potentially fill that in with a one-time expense. A great example would be a transfer to Fund 46, or prepaying some of your existing debt. If you were next year to fill that gap with a permanent expense, adding a new staff member, for instance, then those dollars would be, uh, reassigned and they wouldn't be available for the debt. So looking at for a one-time opportunity in your budget to do something good long-term. Um, and then, which would also keep that, those dollars budgeted for a future debt payment.
So the black is your existing, current debt.
Yeah, if you, can you scroll down just a hair, please, so they can see the key? There we go. Thank you. So, go ahead, Lisa.
Well, I was just gonna say the black is the existing, your existing payments, the ones she just told you about, the 231, the 231, the 99, and then back down to 55 for four years. That's your current payments. And then they'll finally go away, and then you, you would just fill it in, wrap it around with that new red bar, the new borrowing. Does that make sense? It's just that we have that one-year gap and we've talked long and hard about what, what to do with that, with that gap, because it's funds that will be available. It's, so you buy a bus, put it in Fund 46, put it into fund balance.
You could build your fund balance with this.
Yeah. For that one year, yep. So, nothing you have to decide now.
Next year.
Yeah, not, well, you could put it in fund balance and use it two years from now. You could use it for the project. You've got lots of options, so, and again, nothing you need to decide now.
So any questions on any of that detail? I, I feel I went through it fairly quickly. So there may be some questions, or is there anything I can circle back to?
So just to make it pretty simple, right, we're, we currently paid roughly 231,000. There's the potential here to borrow up to 3 million. And we would have basically new payments of about 250,000.
Based on?
About a 23, or about a $20,000 increase over, well, till what, 2043, 44, so.
That's if interest rates are at 450. We're conservative, so if you borrow today, you'd be under four. So, eh, don't get too stuck on that 450, because you know, it will fluctuate by the time March comes around, which is when this timeline contemplates locking in the interest rate. You know, who knows? Maybe they'll be at 2%. You just don't know.
Right. This is kind of a worst-case scenario based off today. Yeah, okay.
Yep. Well said.
So you're looking at basically 18 years before that debt amount would fall off. Again, actually it's 20.
It's 20. 20, 20.
State statutes allows you to go, allows you to go out 20, yeah.
So from?
2024 to 2044. Yep, I see what you're saying. The principal payments are 18 years, but it starts the day-to-day, which is 2024.
Yeah.
Good questions. Any others?
And the 3 million has been determined by the feasibility study that was done and estimates, I'm assuming, from?
Well, you can do, you can do nothing all the way up to something extravagant. We're seeking to do something reasonable that doesn't have a budget impact and a tax impact beyond that line item in the budget. And if you do that 20-year line item in the budget of approximately 250, that gets you about 3 million. That's where 3 million comes from. And if you, if you used other dollars from the district, from the general fund, then you end up with more than three, but that's yet to be determined. This mechanism is 3 million.
And you've seen the estimates on that and what that all includes?
Well, we have, we have had conversations with Kraus Anderson and with LHB. We have designs, which we're seeking to show next month. Um, and nothing's been costed out yet. We haven't gotten to that point. But in conversation with Kraus Anderson, um, they believe that with, uh, $3 million and perhaps more from the budget, we could make a very significant impact on our athletic facilities and likely do everything that we need to do. Now, could we go way beyond that? No one's talking about that, but you can do anything you want. But through this mechanism, you're looking at three, and that'll cover most everything we need to do.
And we won't see that until next month?
Uh, the proposals. If you want to look at proposals now, you can look at proposals now. We've got them queued up, ready to go, and Troy is here, but that's your call. We can.
I, I, I would assume that the, I mean, this was all about just looking at ways to finance it at this point, so that we're.
You can look at it this month and next month if you want. It's actually on the July board meeting and the August board meeting.
I don't, I don't want to put Troy on the spot or anything.
Troy's fully prepared to go. We've already talked. He's always, but he doesn't have a fancy outfit on, but he's ready to go.
I don't blame you.
There's no light-up bow tie this evening.
I'm coming back for a light-up bow tie, just so we're clear.
We haven't seen the lit, lit-up version. We just saw the bow tie. The lights was too much for us.
I guess I wouldn't mind hearing, I mean, like, some highlights. I don't.
Have, could, before we get into the whole, the, the awesome stuff about our athletic facilities, what we want it to be like, I guess I just have more of the questions of like, the whys. Um, have we ever looked at doing athletic facilities or anything in this route in the past?
Not in my time, and not in many conversation I've ever had. My hunch is probably no.
Okay, was this occurring elsewhere?
Almost every district, not almost every, there's a lot of districts that take advantage of, if their Fund 38 debt is going away, um, replacing it with something, much-needed facility projects in some way, shape, or form, because they just went to referendum. They don't want to go back to referendum. They don't, they, they see that there's going to be a nice drop they can fill in and get much-needed projects done. So it's a common practice, but like I said, for petition period, probably, like I said, I probably do five a year. So it's not as common as a referendum, but districts do it a lot. Would you agree, Debbie?
Yeah.
Well, like, this would be an, an opportunity and a way to, like you said, to redo a rough. And aren't we gonna have some issues at the middle school still after this referendum?
Well, we hope the big tickets are done, uh, but we don't know that for certain. There isn't any item ones that are $3 million at the middle school. The next probably, number one is probably the roof of this building, which is 20 years old, moving towards 25, 30 years old. Uh, middle school just needs a facelift, to be quite honest. If you want to chime in, Troy, certainly.
Facelift and then the, the base of the exterior basement walls needs, um, through wall flashing replacement sometime in the year.
There will always be ones, just what those ones are gonna be. We, we don't always know. We got surprised with the heat pumps. We got surprised with the HVAC. Much of what we're doing at the high school is not a surprise. We could see that one coming for years. So, excellent question, because you want to certainly position yourself to tackle that which matters most, and something might matter most.
I still want to know how we're gonna pay it back.
In regards to this?
Yeah.
Well, I, I, the, the, the paying this back is built in. The way we're financing this is by dropping a new line item. Well, the, the, the paying this back is built in, the way we're financing this is by dropping a new line item in for that two hundred and thirty-one, at two hundred and fifty approximately, over the course of the next twenty years. You're simply removing one line item and, and putting in another. And that frees up the three million dollars to do the athletic facility upgrade. So that's how you're paying it back.
If you elect not to do it, correct me if I'm wrong, if you elect not to do it, then if you go to get this money in the future, you have to go back to referendum, is that true? Not true?
So if you, if you chose not to do the project, then let's fast forward five or six years, then the, the existing debt payments would retire. Those dollars commonly get reallocated to other things in the budget. So, fast forward then to when you tried to do it again, you need to carve out new, essentially, to finance a loan or within your operational budget via Fund Thirty-Eight, or go back to referendum.
So for example, if you, you have two hundred and thirty-one this year, and just say, forget the other debt, and you go to zero next year, you could hire two teachers, but for five years, then in five years, you're set, oh, we wanna do this project. Well, now you gotta let those teachers go, cause you gotta fill it in with the debt payment. Cause remember, you're limited by the state on how much you can raise. And so you have to find out how, you know, figure out how you're gonna fill that in. So if you didn't do this project and you don't have debt payments, you would have two hundred and thirty-one thousand to spend somewhere else, right, on an annual basis.
So these are best-for-the-wanted-done type of projects?
They are best-for-the-wanted-done type of projects, yes.
This is really, go ahead, so, sorry, Joe.
Is there an opportunity, again, cause to me, but again, just think, I'm just thinking differently, but three million is a ton of money, especially after a forty-three and a half million dollar referendum. I don't know if the timeliness of this is that great. But there's no doubt, when you look at our athletic facilities and fields and whatnot, we need a lot of help.
Mm-hmm.
And.
We do.
And even if we were just looking for a million, and we didn't have to go to the people, is there an opportunity to still get input, surveys or whatnot, from the people, the taxpayers, to make sure that this is financially responsible, you know, for the community?
If that's what you want to do, certainly, we wouldn't be entering into a resolution to do any of this until the late fall. You're not casting a vote now, next month, or the month after, it wouldn't be until October, November, December.
Okay, so we have time to breathe.
Absolutely, we certainly do. We're trying to get this out in front of people early, so people can go ahead and get their minds around it.
Hence the timeline, November twentieth is the next time we would need your attention regarding this, which would start the petition, thirty-day petition process. The goal would be to have that process finished by the end of the year.
Now, there's two big factors here, I think we always gotta keep our eyes on. The first is that ref, that debt within the budget itself, that non-referendum debt is falling off. And when we get into two thousand and twenty-four, there's really only one set of debt left, and that'll be about a hundred thousand dollars left on the property across the street. The other big timeline that we gotta keep our eyes on, Kraus Anderson leaves town at the end of summer of two thousand twenty-four. I'm not here to tell you how, how much it costs to bring, bring them back to town, but I know it's not free. So if they're already here, the timing of this to get this work completed in the spring and summer of twenty-four would be perfect. Cause they're already here and there's no cost to bring them back. So that's another timeline we need to keep our eyes on.
I do, out of the, Joe, just, I think just for, you weren't on the board when we did the survey, for the big referendum, the forty-three and a half million dollar referendum, and the surveys that we did get back, does, do we still have, like, access to those?
We have access to surveys through School Perceptions going back in two thousand sixteen.
Joe and Steve both haven't, haven't seen those, but maybe you could have access to both, both of you could have access to those now. So the biggest thing that we heard in the surveys that we sent out back then was one pool, which nobody seems real interested in getting the pool done with the feeling of that being a recurring expense. But the other most commonly noted thing in those surveys that were returned was athletics. They, actually, people really wanted us to do athletic facilities before they wanted a new roof or a new HVAC system, which is crazy in my mind, cause you wouldn't operate your home like that, like, you wouldn't put in a pool before you put your roof in. But it was like noted over and over and over again, and I don't think, we didn't get a huge sample size back. I think that's the biggest frustration, like, when you're sitting here that you want to do what's responsible and be the voice to the people. But when you have like eighteen percent that returned in surveys on forty-three and a half million, how do you get, you know, we hoped that we had a good sample size from that. I'm not sure that we would have a huge response, and that it costs us money to send that out, to do a survey like that. But if we're working within that timeline of that thirty days, I mean, if, certainly if people were against this and they were gonna sign a petition, I think we would have a strong idea, just based on that, if people didn't want us to do this. So maybe a survey isn't, I'm just, I mean, I don't, I don't care how we go about, I'm just saying that if we're gonna spend money to do it, maybe just waiting that thirty days would, our community would tell us. And obviously, we're not voting on this tonight, so, but I think if we could get access, these guys to have access to our last survey.
Yes, you have access to all School Perception surveys, as long as we've been doing them. Just gotta dig it out of my email.
It costs us some money.
To do a survey is, it's, it's not cheap, it'll probably cost you a couple thousand dollars to do a survey, yes. If you did it through them, you could do your own, certainly.
But it's the perfect opportunity, because you're not gonna see the, you're not gonna see the financial hit. You're just gonna absorb, as one falls off, you're absorbing.
It literally keeps your tax bill looking exactly the same.
Yep.
That's what it does.
And if you, and if you, if you returned those dollars, right, didn't do anything, what's the financial impact to the individual and the public?
I, I'm not a tax analyst, but it's not gonna be tens of thousands of dollars by any means.
It'd be two hundred and thirty-one thousand divided by your equalized value. Do we know what that is, about eight hundred thou, eight hundred million? I have it in the info pack, but most likely, you would levy those dollars to Fund Ten. So from a levy impact, it would be neutral. You could choose to not levy those dollars at all, but that would be unusual, because there are always needs to fill those operational.
So you're basically un, levying under the revenue limit by two hundred and thirty-one thousand. Most districts don't do that, because you have needs.
So, so what you're saying, in essence, is you're taking your two hundred and thirty-one and putting it into your general fund, as opposed to devoting it towards a facility, it's not going back into taxpayers' pockets, that's what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying.
You can put it back in taxpayers' pockets if you want to, you're just under-leveeing. I don't know that this district, I know in my time, it doesn't, it's never under-leveeing, and I imagine Twila's never lived a time where we've under-leveied. We have some neighbors that do that, but we're not in their situation.
And if we do that, if we under-levee and then that returns to the taxpayers, then do we have to start the process over again to get that tax money back?
So most often, when districts choose to levy less than what's scheduled, it, later, when they want to go back to what is scheduled, then they're seeing a bump up to the taxpayer. So typically, a more steady approach to taxpayer impact or, or notice is to levy what the full allocation available. Am I explaining that okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we could always put it towards our Fund Balance and reduce the borrowing in our cash flow balance of two million.
Yep, yep.
With borrowing, and reduce that and reduce the interest impact on that, which would be somewhat.
This is an opportunity for you to make an investment, you're not doing anything tonight. Make an investment in our children, which is what you did when you passed a resolution to go to referendum. It's what our community did when they passed the referendum back in April of two thousand twenty-two. I'll give you an example of what's happening right now, we don't have any baseball coaches in the room, cause they're all coaching tonight, there's a hundred and seven kids playing baseball tonight. That's straight from Ryan Humpel, who's coaching one of those teams, and he can't coach the other, cause he's coached for two and he can only be in one spot. Hundred and seven kids playing baseball tonight. And when you drove past the football field and the baseball field, you saw some of them and you saw a whole bunch more on the track. This is an opportunity for investment, the timeline lines up, and our financial portfolio lines up. This is an excellent opportunity, which truly closes by the end of two thousand and twenty-four. And yes, I'm interested in feedback from the community too. But this is a really good opportunity that's not gonna come along again, not until two thousand and forty-three. And that's a long time.
And the needs don't go away, if you don't invest, then the needs doesn't go away.
They don't. I'll, I'll give you a, a real-life baseball example, I couldn't even, you could not have set this up better on like a YouTube video, if possible. George and I went over to the baseball field, where are you at, George, Jordan in the room? George and I went over to the baseball field to look at the outfield, to talk about whether it needed to be regraded. And George said, "Look at that." And I looked over, and there was a cloud of dirt flying in the air, there was a golfer literally digging a hole right there. It was ten feet from the left-field fence, I went around to the other side of the fence, and there he did, he popped up. And it was a huge hole. That's one, cause where there is one golfer hole, there is more.
So, Troy, what does a baseball field cost?
Depends what you want it to be.
Well, I wanna, I wanna hear, I want you to deflate my dreams right now. What does a baseball field cost, just for, just one baseball field? And, and again, I know we need multiple.
Here are the athletic facilities, walk us through it.
Please.
Debbie, you don't want this one, let Troy have this one.
Sorry to put you on the spot. But not sorry. So.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, but you guys stay here yet.
You only got four days, what do you care?
So when we look at what's being proposed, what's being talked about, there are a number of things that are part of the three million dollars.
Try and get in on that mic, Troy, if you can.
There you go.
So there's a number of things that are part of the three million dollars, the biggest of which is the, is the football and track stadium component. So when we look at the track complex, you know, we're looking at a lot of different questions. Do we wanna be able to put soccer in the middle of the track? Do we wanna add a lane to the track? Cause right now, you know, most, most districts and most facilities have about one more lane than what you have. So when you talk about hosting events and things like that, the number of lanes are important, because the more lanes, the shorter the event takes, or the more athletes are able to participate. So, so when we looked at the, the stadium, you know, that became the biggest part of it. So, looking at the sketch that's there, you can see that we're looking at adding lanes to the track, widening it, so that we can do both soccer and football within it. And, and then, you know, taking a look at what the impacts are as we slide things further to the, further to the west. So right now, you can see that currently, those amenities are located here, shifting them up, so that we have the additional space for the track. The, the other thing that needs to be done, so when you talk about what needs to be done on the baseball field, you know, the infield and all of that seems to be in great shape, not doing a lot of work to that. You've already made an investment in some of the dugouts, the, the facility that's behind the backstop. The biggest thing is how do we make improvements to the outfield, talking about the golfers and things like that. But also, how do we take care of the fence? So, the outline of the fence kinda follows a meandering path, and, and takes into account, you know, the location of the scoreboard, things like that. Lighting is also part of many of these projects, and, and so when you're looking at it, you know, we were talking about these two facilities as being almost like a one million dollar expenditure for baseball and some of the other amenities, and then two million dollars roughly for the track, is how it's breaking down. So, so how those pieces fit, you know, is still yet to be determined in terms of what the allocation is. We know that the need is much bigger than three million dollars across all of the facilities and amenities, but we're thinking right now, this is what would fit in a three million dollar budget. The other thing we talked about, when we looked at other options, I'm not sure if you have the other options there.
Yep, it's the same PowerPoint you provided me.
So some of the other options that are being, that we looked at or considered was, you know, rather than taking the current stadium, modifying it, what if we just picked it up and moved it to another place on the site? And said, rather than starting over and making accommodations here, because it's money to move things, it's money to move the bleachers, money to move the press box. How long can you go without the amenity, as we start to, to rebuild and resurface? Could we just pick it up and move it, leave this facility or amenity as a junior high facility, and then do a new complex on the other side of the baseball stadium? One could be sized then for soccer, the other could remain practice football, and could be physical education. We're looking at, when we talk about two million dollars, we're looking at doing turf for the infield of the, of the track surface. So the conversation is, when we talk to soccer, soccer said, "We don't necessarily need turf, grass is fine." And, and so, you know, maybe we look at how, you know, each one of those amenities becomes useful in very different ways. So if this was to remain football, and we do an interior size for that, that would be a smaller bit of turf versus moving it to another location where we'd wanna size that for the larger amenity of soccer. So those are kinda how the different strategies play out. So even looking at making sure we have space available here for, you know, an auxiliary field, because you do have a lot of practice, you have a lot of youth sports, things like that, that use that green space. So trying to make sure that the folks over at the elementary school know that as you continue to move the playground in this direction, you're actually taking up valuable green space that you don't have a lot of in close proximity to, to the amenities you have, as well as locker rooms and things like that.
In conversation with Kraus Anderson, Gary Ziffko is the person that usually prices things out. He stated in my presence, in a meeting held about a month ago, if he did your football field as a turf surface, dropped soccer on that turf surface, and added a ninth lane to the eighth lane track, and then redid the baseball field, you could do all of that work for approximately three million dollars. That's what he said to me. Now, remember, and I'm not a soccer player, we do have a soccer coach in the room. When you do soccer on the football field, it can't remain the same size, because soccer has a wider field in the middle. And there's no agreed-upon for sure absolute dimensions, but it is wider, that we know for certain. And if you add a ninth lane, you automatically have to move the bleachers and the press box, because you either have to move a road in front of the middle school, or move bleachers. And I think you know the cost of moving the road would be far bigger. So all of that work could be done for about three million dollars. Could you still do baseball, JV baseball and softball? I believe we can, and we can do that through the budget, rather than the three billion dollar mechanism we're talking about. And that would get everything that we needed to be done in the summer of two thousand and twenty-four, or maybe a little after. And this, we can put to bed for a very long time.
Who are you talking, turf, you're talking AstroTurf?
Artificial turf. Yep, AstroTurf is a brand.
Not a blend, not a blend?
When you say blend.
Like, just a blend of regular, just natural grass, instead of having artificial out there?
You know, we did talk about natural grass versus turf. There are districts that are still sticking with natural grass for their competition field, there aren't that many. They're not as cheap as you think, because, you know, by the time you start thinking about the maintenance of a grass field, the watering, the mowing. But the biggest reason why most districts in this, in this region go with turf is because you can get on it early. So when you start thinking about spring sports, you know, whether it's baseball, softball, it's amazing how many different groups will go out and practice on the turf, even though it's football. Groups will go out there and start practicing on the turf, because it's not muddy. So that's the biggest reason why most people appear to turf. It's not necessarily for, for the athletic component, it's to get on it early, it dries out fast. So, you know, if you're looking at a one-inch rain, you know, you can be on it that same day. So turf is just very versatile that way. So that's the biggest reason, in my experiences, why school districts go with turf, is the versatility.
And we spend a fortune on mowing and a fortune on lining.
And for lighting.
And I get, I understand that, I, I just, I guess that there's maintenance to artificial turf as well.
Yep, not as much as, not as much as grass, but there is maintenance.
I'm, I'm concerned, concerned about safety for the kids, I'm concerned about knees, I'm concerned about rubber and eyes, I'm concerned about concussions, I'm concerned that it's hard, I'm concerned about staff infections. We talk about making this game safer, especially when it comes to football, and I'm a huge football advocate. I live and breathe football, I coach football in this district, I, but we are, it's a dying sport because of concussions and the, all, the safety factor of it. And when we talk about making this game safer, I just, I, I know that there's studies both ways, just like everything else, but it just doesn't seem like turf is the safest for concussions and knees.
Yep, studies out there, you know, are everywhere, right, when you start comparing athletics, you know. I know that most recent studies show that there's more concussions in soccer than there is in football.
Yep.
And for a variety of reasons, and, and then when you start getting into sports like lacrosse, you know, you've got a whole another level of, of danger that enters in, so.
Especially girls soccer, and it, would girls soccer be playing on the artificial turf then? That would be soccer for both boys and girls.
Yeah, and what we've talked about is making sure that there is a grass field somewhere, large enough for soccer, because, you know, when you start looking at competition for space, you know, you start adding all of these different sports that are clamoring for time. And, and you, you have a lot of need for grass, whether it's artificial or real. So, but those are the reasons why we do turf is just to get out there earlier. And so, you know, it doesn't matter if it's the, you know, professional game, college game, you know, you've got some folks saying, we're gonna go back to grass. Because of, because of our concern for knees and everything else. But, you know, at the same time, there's still a push going the other way because it's faster, you know, it's, it's just a quicker game. So, you know, I'm working with a district right now that said, we want grass and we want it as long as you can make it. Because our guys aren't, aren't quick, so.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, so it's, it's, you know, there's a lot of reasons why you might do something over something else. But, but like I said, the, the real reason why schools go to turf is just the versatility, how quickly it dries. The reason why it's the stadium is because that was the, that's the glamour field, that's the money shot, right? So, and we do a lot of turf, you know, we're, we're doing, we do the sports complex up in Blaine for the soccer. You know, a lot of those have switched to turf, just because of how hard they're played, so.
Right, I don't, in a way do, Josh help me or Mr. Byrne help me? Five or six varsity football games a year, right? I mean, depending on the year, right?
Yeah, we do all our lower level games out there, we do all our middle school football games out there, so like.
Right, our middle school and, and freshmen.
You could have a C team and a JV football game on a Monday night, you could have two middle school games on a Thursday night and then a game on a Friday night.
Right, now our.
Yeah, that's the important thing, if you throw soccer in the mix and add two varsity, two JV games. And if you get a muddy rainy night, you know, we've, we've actually canceled freshman games in the rain and the boys were pretty mad at us. But the truth is, you just destroy the field and now it's, it's ruined for the varsity team for the rest of the year, so.
The turf is a very predictable surface, regardless of weather conditions, it's a very predictable surface. I think if you go walk on our campus right now, like practice football field, it's like concrete out there. Regardless, you know, I think some of us think of the AstroTurf in the metro room where it was like, you'd see a fly ball hit off the center field. And it bounces up to the, you know, to the roof or bounces over the fence. These updated athletic fields, there's like a padding component underneath there. I will say some NFL stadiums are saying, we do want some, you know, real grass to go away from the turf. They also have probably a crew of thirty guys who dedicate their entire lives to that. We have maybe one or two people that have to service our whole eighty years here. The maintenance has been very stressful on our, on our ground, we've tried to maintain all these facilities. And what's, what's funny is we have the same conversation about, about basketball court floors. You know, it's, for a long time, they were hard. And, you know, Williams Arena where the golfers play, they hadn't changed that floor out until, was it, you know, almost two thousand was the original floor? And they changed it out and five years later, they put a different floor in. You know, the first one lasted a hundred years and then the second one, five. And why is that? And the reason is because floors got so soft, because what did players want to do? Jump. And what did they find out? When the floor is soft and they jump, it's not good for anything else. You know, it impacts the balance of the ball, it impacts the, the issues with knees because the floor's got a lot of give. And so there's this constant give and take, constant design that's, that's happening. And, you know, as was mentioned, turf's predictable, it's gonna be the same no matter what day you go out there. But, you know, grass is, one day it's muddy, the next day it's hard as a rock. And, and so there's that, that side of it as well, so. So it's, it comes down to your decision. And we, we did North St. Paul, they put in grass. You know, and, and they did it because, because they thought it was important to practice on the same field that you play on. And they couldn't afford to turf everything. But if you go to Roseville, they turfed everything, baseball, softball, practice fields, stadium, it's altered. So, you know, it, it, it comes down to how much money you have to spend and what your priorities are and what you decide to go with.
Is there a better blend of grass, natural grass? That this could be dug up, redone, added in some different soil? So that it would make it better and not so much maintenance as what it is now, not so, not so tough on it?
The best, when it comes to grass, if you want grass, the best, the best material we have is a, it's a composted sand. Sand is great because, you know, we can get the roots going deep. It gives you pretty much the same predictability, you know, as a turf field when you've got lots of sand. You have to spend quite a bit of money on drainage. So there's, there's a lot of different things that kind of go into what's the best mix. But, you know, when you go with sand, you know, it requires a lot more maintenance too, a lot more water. So, like I said, for, for everyone that has something really good, there, there's a drawback and vice versa. But, but like I said, the biggest advantage is if you, if you don't want turf, I like sand. And the reason why I like sand is because you can dry it out, it's the same reason why farmers put drain tile everywhere, right? It's so it can get in the field faster. So same thing applies to track and field amenities, so.
So the timeline, we're a little off script, which is fine, was to look at design proposals in the month of July. And then we're gonna talk about listening sessions here at the end of the agenda. The month of August, the community comment, if you looked at Board Book, you will know that we're gonna talk about athletic facilities. And have an opportunity for community feedback at that meeting, and that could include coaches too. Not that they couldn't provide feedback to you other ways, but that's a formal time where you can engage with them because it's on the agenda and you can. But are, are there any other comments, questions, thoughts that you wanted to share with the ladies from Baird? Because Troy stole their turn, no, I'm just kidding. And they're here, they are far more knowledgeable about this than I ever will be. And I, I want to give you that opportunity if in fact you had further comments about that or questions for them. Not to make you come back up to the mic, but maybe there are, I don't know.
Well, before Lisa leaves, you know, I've been here for a number of years. And, and truly want to thank you for the guidance that you've given this district. I mean, you've saved us tens of thousands of dollars in refinancing and guiding us through many budget situation. And so I just really want to say thank you.
Yeah, I think when I started working, Steve was here, Steve Shield, you were on the board too.
Yep. He's that old, yep.
All kinds of refinancing, so yeah. But no, on the, on this timeline, you guys have plenty of time to think about this. Your next step, that's why I highlighted the yellow board column, I mean, your next step is really, you know, in November. When you really kind of have to bill your dollar amount because you're gonna adopt a revolution at that point to start that therapy game. So you have time to think about it and discuss it, talk about it and ask questions come up around the financing.
We also have your number. See, there you go, we're good, right?
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. So are you okay with Troy coming back in July and we can further engage? Because there was more than one proposal, you only saw really one slide. There were four or five other slides. And then you could go through each, so you know your options and know what your price points on your options are. Because it really depends on what you're doing.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
But thanks for sharing some preliminary information with us. Gives us time to think.
Yep. Hey, come up with more questions.
There you go.
More questions.
Joe, you look like you had a question. Or a comment, go ahead.
And I don't mean to take away Troy's, everything he's done so far with everything. But is there an opportunity to not have to go through engineering and stuff like that? Mr. George Sigsworth, do you have a capacity to jump on any of this stuff or?
My recommendation is we would use an architectural firm to do design work rather than George. I love George, but I don't, I don't think that's.
Well, I'm just saying, anywhere, again, I was just saying, like, again, for the HVAC system that he worked, that he worked on, he was able to save us.
Lots.
A lot of money.
Yes.
So there's, as, as, just like when we did the referendum piece, you know, I sat down with George and we went through line item by line item and said, what can you do? What can I do? And, you know, there's things that, that, you know, you look at it as like, you don't need me. There's things that you don't need me, but if I just take a quick look at it, I can stamp it and save you, you know, eighty percent. And so we went through and we literally itemized as we negotiated the contract. Everything that George is doing, we negotiated, pulled it out of our contract. And, and some things we just said, you need my stamp, but I don't need to be involved in it to the same degree. So we would do the same thing with deals too. So whether it's a, you know, a dugout, I don't need to be involved in that, but you know.
I appreciate where you're going, Joe, absolutely, I know that, Troy does not work for free, I get it.
That's right.
Well, again, just the capacity issue, I mean, again, we toured the high school. And absolutely everything is upside down there, being ripped apart. And to make a timeline and everything like that at this point, you know, again, you're a cool, calm guy. And I'm just going, there's a lot on our plate right now. That's, that's all I want to make sure is we have the capacity.
A lot. I believe we do because we have the right people in our corner with Kraus Anderson, LHB, and Baird.
Yeah, the facility looks like chaos when you get in there, I've been in there multiple times and it's just like, but it's. Kraus Anderson has the capacity to bring in the personnel they need to, to make things step along. You know, and, and I think they've pretty much had a good line on the componentry that we need. And that's been the, probably the best thing is, is, you know, you can have everything in place and if something's out among, you got a problem.
I, I can't even begin to count the number of projects I've done with Kraus. I think my first, the first job Jerry, Gary Zifko ever did as a kid out of college was, was working on one of my projects. I think it was up in Crookston actually. But, but, you know, you get to know the folks and, and you, you work well together because you, you know what each other needs. And you know, you know where that line is between, this is what I can handle, this is what you can do. And so when we did the design work, you know, it was a lot of fun to say, all right, how do we phase it? How do we take care of it? How do we, can we get in this area and out? You know, if we cut the ductwork here, will we still have enough fresh air to keep class going even, even if the building is not done? Can we still get enough fresh air to make sure that it's an occupied space? So, and all of those calculations we end up submitting to the state to say, all right, we're not done, but it's habitable space. And, and so, you know, it's been, it's been a great relationship with us, not only with Kraus, but, you know, working with the district. I think we've competed a number of times to do work here, we've been fortunate enough to get selected each time and, and I appreciate that. And I think I've been working here for fifteen years.
You have. And the two things we can say of this project right now, not to become even more long-winded, we are under budget and we are on timeline. And the reason we are under budget and on timeline has a lot to do with the flexibility of the high school. Because we were in there full on in May, when we really weren't supposed to be and scheduled to be until June. And that was under Josh's leadership that we were able to do that, we got moving, so we're doing well.
Yep.
Maybe we should segue right into buildings and grounds because that's, Troy's here to talk about that.
It'll also parlay right into athletics, I can't wait.
Well, we did tours last week, George and I went on a tour, Keith and I met last week and Keith's been in the building. And Joel, thank you.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy retirement.
And Joe and George also did, we simply had conflicting schedules, so we had to do a couple of different tours. Upside down is an accurate description, that's organized chaos, I'm certain of that. I'm not sure if Joe or Keith or George wanted to chime in with anything of their observations, it's quite a scene, that is for sure. And that's only half the picture because elementary sort of hasn't even come into fruition yet. So Joel and Keith?
One perspective is Kevin Harris, when I was meeting with him, fifty-five thousand pounds of ductwork in the high school. That's what we're replacing and putting in, it's like, I didn't come on one truck, so.
And one of the kids assembling all that ductwork as it comes into the media center was attending high school in Amory this time, well, last year. He graduated, graduated last year and now he's assembling ductwork in the, in the media center. So it was pretty cool. I mentioned earlier, right, I'm amazed at how many people working on the project graduated from Amory five years ago or less.
That's pretty awesome.
George, did you want to share anything or Joel?
The biggest thing is we're unscheduled yet. That's basically what we're, our biggest goal is to stay unscheduled because starting school isn't, it's not that far away.
It's not.
Are we gonna be done before it starts, before school starts?
Done? No. Occupiable? Yes.
Done. Which school year are you referring?
I didn't say it.
Twenty-four, twenty-five maybe? Because that's the hope, the end of summer, twenty-four, twenty-four.
Could be a whole lot of kids seeing careers that they might want to go into over the course of the next school year, that's for sure.
Yeah, I think that's a, the, the staff working and the staff of school is meshed quite well there.
Yep, we're, we're best friends, we had a good meeting with Alex, the foreman today. David and I met with him in our strategic office there at the high school. We actually have a window seat now, which is rare for us, David does, I took the corner without a window. Right now, the, the plan is for like the high school office crew and the guidance crew. August twenty-first is the target date to have us back in the office. Our staff returns on August twenty-second. So yes, but I said, take care of the guidance first, Dave and I can work anywhere, so.
Okay.
One thing I will say Keith is, your new shoes, you look fat. I think you gotta get a pair of those for George because he needs all the help he can get.
I can, I can help him out, you got, you got an Amazon account, George?
Luciana's not coming to this meeting, she's coming in August, if you wanted to race her.
Run fast, jump high shoes.
We'll let you start at the fifty meter mark and see if you can beat her.
I'll just go like that and they'll think I already ran it.
I noticed he didn't think that about mine.
Never cross that line, email in their shoe.
Now Troy had something that he wanted to share with us that he and I and George and I and George and Troy had talked about in recent weeks. This isn't anything that has already happened, this is but a proposal that Troy has thrown out there. But it is time sensitive because it is a change in what we were scheduled to do.
Next board meeting, we would need direction. Because after that point, the opportunities to make change basically close. And so what we're talking about is, is previous administrations created an account that allowed commercial businesses to get rebates to limit their use of fossil fuels. And so part of it is going off peak, some of it is alternative system choices and things like that. And, and current administrations are now saying those dollars can be applied to not only commercial projects, but also public projects. We were concerned that maybe that might be lost with the last budget ceiling negotiations. But it's still a program that everyone can take advantage of. And so what that means is, now that it's available, it's taking a look at, essentially taking your, your building system. Making it less reliant on gas and electricity and more reliant on ground source energy. And so there are two ways that we do the calculations. Number one is the annual energy usage versus peak consumptions. And each of them have a different mathematical equation with different amounts that you would get back in rebates. And different amounts and how it would impact your utility bill. So just because you get more money back for one program, doesn't mean it's the cheapest to operate year round. And we'll talk a little bit about that. So in one of them, we take a look at what is the most load that we can shed onto a ground source system? And when I say ground source, it's basically burying or sinking wells out into your fields. And then storing energy when, when energy is to be stored so that you can retrieve it when energy costs are high. So it kind of helps to balance that consumption, lowers the demand on the grid when demand is the highest. And then when demand is the lowest, that's when you're using energy to, to produce and heat the building, cool the building or store it in the ground. And so your heat load, as we converted between KBTUs and tons, your heating load for the high school is about three hundred and forty-four tons. The max size that we can get on the first calculation is two. The max size that we can get um, on the first calculation is two hundred and eighty-four. So when you look at the heating load at three thir, thir, three forty-four, the max load for cooling under this calculation is two thirty-nine. So under one option that you would consider is if you were to go and pick the side that says, we're gonna size the system for peak consumption, you basically would not need any other components for cooling. On the flip side, if we size it for seventy-five percent of your energy usage, the size that we would be able to apply for in terms of tons for the rebate is two hundred and six tons. Going back up to the top, we know that we've got two hundred and thirty-nine tons necessary for cooling at your peak. So we would need to have some sort of supplemental system, like your chiller, for cooling um, on your hottest days, or you say, on your hottest days, we're just gonna live with and say, we can survive for those three or four days a year that we might exceed the load. Because we're sizing it for maximum energy or annual energy consumption, not maximum peak load. Does that make sense? Between the two different choices we have. Next slide. So looking at your capacity component first, that two hundred and eighty-four tons, right? Here's how your system breaks down in terms of what it would take or what the cost would be to transition the system that you currently have in the building, that's currently bid, transition it to ground source. That means we're not putting heat pumps everywhere. We're basically taking the air handling units you have and we're, we're customizing them to work in conjunction with a ground source system. So to make that conversion, the two big things is up here on top, is the ground source heat pump component and then the well fields themselves. So those are your two biggest costs and your two biggest variables on the top. And as you move down, no matter which of the two options you're looking at, these costs remain the same. So as we add them all up, over there's the cost, this is the rebate that's applied to it. So your rebate or credit is about two million six hundred and sixty thousand dollars is the rough anticipated rebate check that you would get from the federal government. Of that, those costs are amounting to one point nine four two million dollars in added cost to the project. So ultimately, the check that you would put in your pocket is one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Seven hundred and seventeen.
Or seven hundred and seventeen thousand.
Oh, it's whose pocket are we going to?
One of the same guys.
Does that make sense? I, I'm going quickly, but, but in essence, um, that is option one and we're looking at designing for the peak load. Next slide. Going for the greatest impact in terms of greatest, or your annual energy consumption, we're at two hundred and six tons is what is felt would make the biggest impact. If you look at your rebates, this is the biggest variable here, but you see that, you know, we've got fewer wells and things like that. And then you come and carry it all the way down, your rebate is almost two and a half million dollars minus the one million four fifteen, because you've got fewer wells and those funding costs over there are, are less. So your net savings is about one million sixty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. That's in your pocket. And those are rough numbers. You don't know until the project's done and complete. Um, but as we go through engineering, um, we use a tax consultant, um, that he's the one who go, went through and did the calculations to say, based on the design, based on the strategy, this is what he thinks you would recoup or spend and get back from the federal government in the terms of a rebate, to spend more money to go with a system that is now less, less reliant on fossil fuels and more reliant on off-peak.
And are there strings on what that net savings back after the rebate, after the additional value? Are there strings on what that net savings can be spent on?
The answer is no.
So there you could potentially free up money for many other things.
Correct.
Including more referendum work that um, is still under the umbrella for the purpose of, it simply wasn't a item one. Or athletic facilities.
Correct.
Or fund balance.
Correct.
Or Fund Forty-Six.
Now in this option, um, even though you're designing to the greatest consumption, you'll get the most money back, but you'll have a higher energy bill. Because of the fact that you'll have more days when you're consuming energy when costs are at their highest. So more money back here, higher energy bill, less money back, lower energy bill. So two different ways of thinking about it. So the other thing that we, that we've kind of worked on here to make sure that we get it uh, get it to work is um, the reason why we weren't touching the baseball fields, um, one of the reasons why we weren't touching the baseball outfield, um, you know, on this, on the project that we had just discussed, is we would, if you move forward with this, the idea would be, we're gonna stick the well field in the outfield of the baseball facility. In that way, we get a whole new field minus the gophers after we drill the wells and have to redo the entire um, turf that sits on top of the field. And then we would just have to pay for the relocation of the fence.
Okay.
I just wanna know, where do I sign?
We're doing a lot of them, a lot of conversions.
And it's just big geothermal.
Big geothermal.
And what is the lifespan of these wells?
Hmm, I did, I did Deep River Falls in ninety-six and they're still going. So they've lost four wells out of the uh, out of the, I think they did like a hundred and eighty wells. They've lost four over the years, so each well can be shut off. So over time, some of them do fail, you know, might spring a leak or something like that and, you know, by, by measurements of water going in and water coming out, you can quickly figure out which one's leaking, so um.
So basically you're, you're taking out one well and discharging into another.
Well, it's a big loop.
Yeah.
Yep, so when one starts leaking, um, there's enough capacity that you can just turn one off.
So in connecting the dots, you could use Fund Thirty-Eight to fund three million dollars in athletic facilities. This could get you to four million and if you use district dollars, you could move towards five million dollars. Then we're taking care of everything for certain. Or you could scale back and use that money for other things. But it gives you an option.
Right.
And you don't need to decide tonight, but it gives you a really good option potentially.
We would need to know at the next board meeting, because um, and the reason for that isn't because we wanna rush you to a decision. It's because the mechanical contractor said, if you wait any longer, they can't modify the machines or the, the air handling units that are being delivered to site, it's too late to modify them. And it's too late to hire, to modify the duct work um, that attaches to those components, because it will already be here um, for the original.
Does.
So, so by the next board meeting, you'd have to have a yes or no on that. We want to go forward with it, but not necessarily which plan you're going with?
We would need to know which plan.
Which one?
Which plan too?
Does this result in displacing those who use the baseball field for a period of time?
Yes.
Okay. How long?
About one season.
Okay. So there's a drawback, obviously.
And when would this work be done?
It would be done, um, we could actually do some of the wells um, this winter. So the work would be done over the ca, over the course of when you say yes, until the building is finished.
So you, are you losing the spring of twenty-three or are you losing the spring of twenty-four? Or twenty-four or twenty-five?
We would probably lose the, the coming year, twenty-four.
Okay.
Yep, we would be sinking the wells this winter and spr, and then doing repair work and then we need time to grow turf.
Sure.
This is strictly cooling.
What would you do there, Ben?
Well, it's, it's heating too.
It's heating.
Okay.
So I'm thinking, if I, if I had some options, like you could contact local schools, is your field available, like happens in the spring. Webster came down early on, cause their field wasn't available, they played a game here. The other thing, there's a lot of turf, well, there's a number of turf fields in the area too, that are appealing and would be fun for our kids to play on. Um, River Falls has a stadium, Falls has a stadium. Might be a couple of fun places for our kids. If they're getting, you know, ten, twelve games robbed from them, it'd be nice for them to go play on them. And I'm just, this just came up in the middle of the meeting, so those are my initial thoughts. But I think you would try to leverage your neighboring districts and their fields and um.
We'd go down to the Little League fields and hit more home runs.
So does your opponent.
And then I was thinking like, well, what if it rains on a Thursday and we're scheduled to play at Clear Lake on a Friday and now they need their field on a Friday? You know, like there's all these things, but um, I would say the, you know, that's something, the logistical stuff is something that we have to sit on and conversation about.
But one year of baseball upset, I guess, versus all of these years of saving for energy and s, saving that long-term energy bill every year.
If we both got a backyard, then we could.
Absolutely. So how many wells?
Uh, I'm not sure if it says it on that.
I couldn't find it.
The uh, the engineers, the engineers, um, they're the ones who gave us the information based on plu, preliminary soil borings in the area.
Right. So is there a chance that that well field would serve more than one building?
No.
Good try.
Good try.
Yeah.
Well, you know.
It's a very good question.
It would've been great, it would've been great if we could've, you know, um, the field that's to the side of the middle school on the north side, is it?
Yep.
You know, we could've, could've sunk some wells in there and uh, and done that when we did the heat pump replacement and all of that. But you know, these dollars and this, this endeavor, you know, wasn't something that really existed at that time when we moved that project forward. So you know, this is something that's new. It's obviously new, because we're, we're proposing it in the middle of uh, in the middle of the design process. And still, you know, going back and changing out what's already been done with new design modifications to system, you know, you're still pocketing a considerable amount of money.
And this is still fitting in the budget?
Oh, yeah, you know, it, it's money that you would be getting back.
Yep.
The, the only downside to this is you've gotta come up with another, you know, one point four million dollars to float the project until you get the check back when the project is done.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yep. Yep.
Other questions? Any other structures or?
Well, you just, you just time your payment based on when you're receiving money. There's a sweet spot to do that.
That need to be built for that, like pump houses and things, or is that all part in the building?
It's all in the building, yep. Yep, so. So yeah, it's, it's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty, pretty nice deal. You know, right now, we're, we're even, we're even working with uh, going through all the math and stuff with, you know, places as far as Red Lake and International Falls. You know, and those are places that thirty years ago, you never would've thought would, would have that kind of payback, given how far north they are. But uh, this makes it very appealing and it helps them overcome those costs, so.
I have an open geothermal in ninety-six.
In your house?
Yep. All it is is a glorified refrigerator.
It is, yep.
It is. You wanna go, open the door. You wanna warm, shut the door and it comes out.
Yep.
Yeah, it works, it's been working great.
Yep. Yeah, it's been around a long time. It's been around a long time, so.
Do you have a recommendation which plan to pick in your experience of doing this? Like the return on the investment, let's say that we're, we pick the first one that's got less dollars back in your pocket, but a, a lower energy bill. Over time, how much of that are we gonna recoup? Would you guess?
I think, I think, you know, George would be the appropriate one to ask, but um, you know, I would think that not having maintenance on a big piece of equipment, um, you know, like a chiller, um, is appealing, cause you don't have to start it up, you don't have to shut it down, you don't have to worry about the system sitting outside. Um, it's a big load on your, on your um, other systems, when you look at, you know, the size of that, that piece. Um, and then the other thing for me that uh, also makes it nice, even though that option has the smallest cash payback or money in your pocket, um, I'm always in favor of saying, my energy bill is probably gonna be smaller. Um, you know, nothing ever goes, nothing ever goes down. This is your one chance to lower your energy bill.
Right.
And uh, and then it just starts creeping back up from a different baseline, so. So that's usually where I end up, but I would say that more than fifty percent go with the, the more money in their pocket. But I, I just think that, you know, to, to shut down a big piece of equipment, not have to worry about it, just, just get rid of it and uh, kinda get rid of an eyesore, makes a lot of noise. You know, those are all things that.
I think if we spend this kind of money though, we have to make sure when we turn that key on opening day, every day is gonna be a good day. They're gonna heat to where they need to heat and they're gonna cool to where they need to cool. So I would base it on our heat. Uh, because I, I, the complaints would come
Yep.
Big time, if, if we spend all this money and there's a half a dozen days during the school year where they're, they're sweating.
Yeah, I, I, and the other, the other reason why I would go down that path is I, I did AC-GC and uh, and, and we sized the system for, for the overall energy usage instead of, instead of the peak. Cause they said, oh yeah, we can, we can deal with just a few days. Well, the last two years, how many, how many just average hot days did we have? Oh my heavens, you know, they were, all the engineering tables and what code allows us to do said, well, they should only have eight days that the system couldn't keep up. Um, they've had like twelve, fourteen days that the system can't keep up, um, just because of where we are right now. So, so I would rather, I would rather design to the peak and make sure that you've got it, rather than, you know, eliminate a piece of equipment or have a piece of equipment that's expensive sitting there, um, just waiting to get serviced.
And so with what you're saying and with what George said, you would lean towards the seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollar initial savings?
And, and it's not necessarily, I mean, and I wanna bring this up too, because if somebody in the end says, we went and did this, now I'm gonna start looking at the electrical bills that are flowing in. There is not really anything clearly stating that we're gonna save money. This is about not using fossil fuels. This is a green deal.
This is a green deal. You will, you will see a reduction, um, you know, that's part of the reason why, reason why you do it. But don't look for it to be a, a gold, a golden ticket or anything.
We're gonna be a reduction, really, right now with what we're doing.
Your biggest reduction is coming from the design that's going in already. We're just making it that much better.
So are you suggesting that you wouldn't see the savings of the additional three hundred and some thousand dollars over the life of the unit?
Oh, you'll see it.
So then it's, it's a no-brainer to me.
So the design, the design takes into account, um, the system that's there, which is, which is the system, the engineers and what they told me, they based it on, on the system that was designed, because that's what we're modifying.
Troy, what's the length of the project? Like, when would you start testing one, when would you finish?
Well, they would wanna start sinking wells sooner than later, because we have to have the wells done to start even heating and cooling the building, um, when we get into the spring. So we're gonna limp along in the old system, I think, throughout this winter, but when we hit spring, the new system needs to be up and online. So, you know, we'll be planting grass probably, you know, May.
Cause my, cause my thought was too is, if you turked your baseball field after that, would you, uh, there's no guarantee that if you plant your seed in May, that's, you're ready for next year's baseballs. Remember when these games start, it's, it's March, April.
Oh, you're funny. There ain't no games played in March. We got seven pieces of snow out there.
It's on the schedule.
Your point is well taken though, Jeff, you gotta be ready when, when the season begins, true.
Cause if you're wiping all, and again, two baseball seasons, but I mean, the idea of turf would make that.
We don't wanna wipe out two baseball seasons.
I worked, working with Pine City, they had, they had dads out there who were snow blowers, blowing up the field before the thaw hit, hoping that they would get a jump on uh, jump on the season.
I know you guys are talking about baseball and those are some of the nice things of our school district, but heating and cooling should be some of the things that are needed.
Every day.
I wanna remind us of that.
If we can do that in a more efficient way and put some money back in our pocket, I think that's a real good thing.
Yeah.
Is there a lot of DNR permitting you have to do through this? Does that take a time or is it all?
It used to be, um, but not, it's, it's pretty, pretty standard stuff now.
To Joe's point, the reason we set off on the whole idea of going to referendum was because of the, the massive failures of efficiency at the high school. That were all systems related. I mean, that's reality, that's where it all began.
Right.
And that's the thing we're seeing right now. That's why it's upside down. They've literally pulled every wire and every pipe out of the building.
Right.
Do you have to go to the baseball field? I mean, I know you're talking about trying to do two birds, one stone, right?
We don't have to do the baseball field, but you know, one of the things that we said was, the baseball outfield is in pretty tough shape. No, we don't have to do the baseball field, but you know, one of the things that we said was the baseball outfield is in pretty tough shape. And so this provides an opportunity to make the improvement and stick it on another project cost, right? So, you know, it's like getting a new outfield without paying for it because it, we have to restore the surface, um, you know, after we bury the tops of the wells five feet down, so.
Do you think, Jeff, you could come up with a, a, not a necessarily concrete plan, but something more solid of how you would tackle this if we went with it by July?
I have to. Yeah, I, I would look at options and I would start picking one of them on my drive home.
That's that job of that athletic director.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the bigger picture of everything. I also have to answer to the athletic community and, you know, those parents and those kids who are juniors and seniors and coaches and things like that, so. But I understand the bigger picture.
The well field's big, so if we put it, you know, in the space that is outside of the fence line, you know, we'd be encroaching on many of the other amenities that are used for other things. So, you know, again, I was just thinking about, um, how can we do a really nice replacement of the outfield if you're gonna have to do it sometime? And uh, you know, it probably is gonna take a few more months because the project's a lot bigger, so it just.
Cause you have to replace whatever you dig up. It doesn't matter where you're digging it up. You're gonna have to replace it.
Correct.
Now, I realize that there are places to dig it up that doesn't have an impact to a sport, sporting event, but that's literally money just to replace grass and overburden, right? I mean, that you wouldn't get anything out of.
And we can, you know, when we do this, right, when we, when we do this, let's say it costs an, an additional, um, let's say to replace the outfield, to haul in new fill material, to run drain tile, to do all that stuff, you're probably talking about, you know, an additional, um, hundred and seventy thousand dollars? You know, well, if you can take a portion of this and apply it to those other amendments that go over the top of the wellhead and put in some drain tile, um, you know, that's above and beyond what the costs are, you know, that, that's a field that now, you know, you're, you're gonna have for decades versus, you know, continuing to limp along with what you have, right? So, so just like the football stadium, you know.
A sink, you put it in the football field?
There's gonna be, there's gonna be sacrifices with the football field too, right? And there's gonna be sacrifices with the track and there's gonna be sacrifices with school and science and, you know, many of the other amenities. And so, um, you know, I just, I just looked at this as an opportunity to say, we want to improve the baseball facility. The only part that the district hasn't touched in some way, shape or form is really the outfield and the outfield fence, and this takes care of it.
Is there negative impacts to play based off of wellhead?
No. Nope, the heads are down about five feet below the ground, so, you know, the biggest, then the monitors and everything, they run over the top of the heads. So if, if something fails, the capacity is you just shut a well off and um, and so there's a variety of reasons you can do that. But that's, that's the goal, right?
Sean, how would you float the money that they talk about having to float till you get the rebate?
Well, it depends how much it would be, but you have to time that around your state aid payments and around your payroll, because those are your two biggest pieces. And time it around when you're gonna get your rebate from the federal government. If you could pin that down, it'd be rather easy. But federal government is not good with declaration of timelines. I see Joe laughing. I think Joe well knows what I'm thinking. It's not probably something we would know with certainty. I, I, I guess I wouldn't wager to guess right now, but we would have to figure out how to do it.
We could swing it.
We ha- we ha- for, for this, we'd have to.
Got a donation box?
We'd have to.
We could swing it.
If, if, again, if we knew when the rebate was coming, it'd be very simple.
We'll have a pretty good idea of when it's coming and generally, they've been pretty good so far. We'll see what happens as more and more people ask for money. But um, you know, in Minnesota, i- it's, they're taking advantage of this much more rapidly than this side of the river, uh, for whatever reason. But um, but I think this would be one of the bigger projects that I've seen, um, you know, out of the fifty we're doing in Wisconsin, so.
I, I would think it would be irresponsible for us to not pursue this and to go with a piece of, another piece of equipment that has to be maintained and fixed and whatever, and where we could actually make a difference here with some money back in our pocket and the savings to the, to our budget on energy costs. I think it would be, it would be irresponsible not to do it.
Well, you'll certainly see this as an action item, whatever you choose to do with it in the month of July, so Cross Anderson knows what to do.
You're gonna make me come back from vacation, that boat I'm missing, aren't you?
Call you up.
If you want to.
I don't know, George, if you had anything else to add or any other thoughts?
No.
Thank you very much, Troy, for your knowledge and sharing it with us here this evening.
Yep, you bet. And if there's any questions, um, by all means, call.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Troy.
All right. And to do, we'll go to our action items. John, you got some meal prices?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. So, uh, as I'm, I'm sure everyone is well aware at this point. Uh, inflation has hit food especially hard. Um, because of that, I'm requesting a ten cent price increase on breakfast, uh, lunch and adult meal prices. Uh, if you look at the screen, you can just see quickly, the red one would be the proposed increase, uh, the white one would be current year, uh, increase. Way this impacts families in a direct way would be thirty-five dollars and sixty cents a year if their students eat both, uh, breakfast and lunch all student contact days. Um, but the reality is all budget surpluses are pretty much going to the inflated costs of food. Uh, the example from this year is the average price of a watermelon for the entire school district was fifteen dollars per watermelon. And our students consume about a hundred pounds of watermelon a week. It's one of their favorites. So the ask is more to continue to be able to offer a next level or a higher level of food offering, uh, without it impacting the district and without having to do a fund ten bailout.
So this is an action item you would do?
I'd like to make a motion to increase the prices of the ten cents. I'll second.
Motion made in second to increase the prices as listed. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. There we go.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep. Thank you, John. All right, our WIA membership.
I'll turn it over to Jeff if you can come up to the mic and you can talk about our WIA renewal. Looks very similar to what we've done for many years.
Um, everything is staying the same. Nothing is changing. We offer, uh, seventeen high school sports. Uh, our middle school sports are not under the WIA. We are co-op, uh, in boys hockey. Our co-op is staying the same, um, at this time. We have had a local school reach out to co-op with us in track, but uh, we haven't even had that conversation.
Girls hockey as well, right?
Girls hockey, yeah, in Somerset, yep. We're just not the host for that.
Got it.
I'm sorry, did you say that you had a neighboring district reach out for track?
Uh, Turtle Lake, I believe, is having conversations about, uh, their track and their condition and they're looking to co-op with somebody. But obviously, when you co-op with somebody, the WIU take on their enrollment and most likely that would bump you up to the next division. So, but anyways, that was just information that I received last week, but nothing's changing here. Um, again, our seventeen sports and we are the host co-op for boys hockey.
Do I have a motion to renew our membership?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, WIA membership renewal.
Second.
I'll second.
Steve, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. There we go. All right, about wells again.
Yeah, we're talking about wells again. Uh, in this case, uh, we are looking at putting a well across the street on our school farm property. We put in the free press per district policy for two consecutive weeks, a request to put in a well. We did not receive any requests, which wasn't entirely surprising. Not everyone views the free press. So George and I are working with, uh, tracking down some folks to bid in on that work. Uh, and we are currently answering some questions for one bidder, so we will have some bids for you, we hope, more than one at the July meeting. We're still within our timeline because our hope was to put in a well here this summer before the weather turned. The, ultimately, the big reason why we need a well on that school property, because in the month of April next year, we're looking at having animals on that property. A sort of four-month farming where we have the, the animals on property through the Polk County Fair. And I'm not a farmer by trade, but from what I have learned from those who do farm for a living is animals typically don't like to drink the city water because of the acid content in that water. They like well water. So we're trying to keep the animals happy. What was that?
Or swamp water.
Or swamp water. But we don't have a swamp. So there's nothing for you to act on, because we don't have any bids here for you to act on. You'll see them in July, we hope.
All right. Next, uh, we got our insurance people.
And we thank you for being patient waiters. We know that liability insurance is top of your mind, but we had other things to discuss. We're sorry.
What I was gonna say is you've listened to many, many exciting things tonight and this is by far the most boring thing you're gonna hear.
Don't undersell yourself. Come on.
Thank you.
When we think lead home insurance, we think excitement.
I'm not even gonna comment. Well, Ben just passed out, uh, an addendum. I apologize for handing it out tonight. It wasn't included in your board packet. But after talking to Sean, we like to keep this as simple as we can. For the last several years, we give you a two-page summary. Uh, you did get that into your board packet, but uh, we do have one item that, uh, we do need to address. And I thought one page of a few numbers would take many, many pages, uh, make it much simpler. But before I get started, I would also like to thank the, the board. I haven't been here for a while. Things have been going very, very smoothly. Not that they're not going smoothly now. But, uh, Lead Home Insurance has enjoyed nearly a fifty-year relationship with the Avery School District. And we also can tell you that the insurance company that you have right now, EMC, which specializes in school districts, uh, you've been with EMC almost twenty-five years. So we've got two very longstanding relationships. EMC insures two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy-five school districts in Wisconsin. And I didn't look to see what they do in the Midwest, but they do new school business, so we're very fortunate to have them. Uh, what I would like to go through very quickly is that two-page document that, uh, was in your board packet. The tone of the conversation is tonight, uh, things are going up. Well, unfortunately, in the insurance world, we're no different. Last year, the board approved a bid for basically all the property and casualty insurance, including the work comp, uh, almost two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars a year ago. Uh, this year, it's two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So roughly an eighty-four hundred dollar increase. Nothing real significant, uh, other than each line item, there's generally been a cost increase. Uh, the good folks, uh, in Madison have given us a decrease in our work comp insurance. The, the rates have gone down the last four or five years, but the, uh, school district has run into a little bit of a bump of profitability. So the work comp has gone up slightly. So I think the renewal terms from last year to this year, when I take everything into consideration, I thought was very, very competitive. Not that you want to spend another eighty-four hundred dollars, but, uh, I thought that was, uh, that was good. The thing that we need to talk about tonight is, uh, Sean and I discussed after last year's renewal that it might be good to bid the policy this year because we haven't done it for a while. So we made that a goal. Uh, we started the actual bid process in March. Uh, we provided a very lengthy bid spec. Uh, EMC bid, bid off of that bid spec. Uh, we gave Sean a copy of that bid spec and, uh, that was sent out to other vendors. So from what Sean told me, we, you had two people.
We had one person kick the tires on the bid, but only one pers- one company actually submitted a bid and that was Lead Home.
So again, we thank you. We're here. But in this bid process, EMC more than periodically does what we call replacement cost estimators. So they go through all the buildings and we just want to make sure we have enough insurance on each building. Uh, we obviously have four school structures and we have two buscar structures. I was a little dismayed. I don't get dismayed with EMC very often, but I was a little dismayed because they knew that we were bidding this year that I got the updated building replacement cost estimates one week before all bids were due. Well, I called Sean and said, hey, here's the deal. I don't think it's fair to the bidders to give them a week or ten days notice and say, okay, here's a different set of building numbers. So what we've done, the bid that you have in front of you rolled last year's property values forward. Okay, so that's what we're looking at. But I think we all know that building costs have gone up from last year. So the second sheet of paper that, uh, Ben passed out is giving you some options of where we might need to go to increase building costs. So stepping back a little bit, last year, EMC proposed the ninety-two million dollar property cover, just buildings. It doesn't have anything to do with other coverages, but we increased our building coverages to a blanket amount of ninety-two million dollars. The word blanket is very important because that is very simply stated, robbing Peter to help pay Paul. So we got a total of ninety-two million for all six buildings. If, for example, the intermediate school burns down or is destroyed in a tornado, we have a specific amount of insurance on the intermediate school. Let's say it's twenty-five million dollars. If it costs thirty-five million dollars to rebuild, we're fine. We've got ninety-two to work with. Where the total comes into play is if the entire campus is destroyed. Now, what are the chances of that happening? Slim, I hope. But I think we all have to be fiscally prudent with the taxpayer dollars to plan for the disaster. Because I don't think we would want to answer to the public to say, we've got ninety-two million dollars, but we need a hundred and twenty to put it back. So if you look at the chart, I just did a few quick calculations. The six buildings total approximately four hundred and fifty-four thousand square feet. This I suggested to Sean when things settle down a little bit, it might be a good question to, to ask Cross Anderson because they build many, many, many new schools. What's an average per cost or per square foot cost to build a brand-new building in Wisconsin? I don't know that number. EMC tries to through their CoreLogic programs and that's what we're working off of. But simple math of your four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar total square feet divided into ninety-two million dollars of insurance comes out to about two hundred and three dollars a square foot. On the surface, that seems a little light to me. We're looking at homes, nice residential homes, we're starting at three hundred dollars a square foot and then that escalates. But commercial construction and residential construction are two completely different animals. So we don't like to tell you what to do. You might think we do, but we like to say we direct you two choices. So there's three choices. We have to make one of them. Unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to stay at ninety-two million dollars. So if we go, and I, I, I meant to say at the beginning, we're talking about building valuation and an insurance term called co-insurance. And it is not my intent to bore you with insurance one-on-one, and I'm not gonna do that because what I'm talking about is a four-hour class and we're gonna do it in about five minutes. What I'm gonna say about co-insurance, it's Jim and Ben's job to keep the Avery School District outside of a co-insurance penalty. So co-insurance is a number that allows us to be a little flexible on how much insurance you can carry. So in the updated reports we got one week prior to the bid. So, in the updated reports we got one week prior to the bid, if you see one-hundred percent value, one-hundred percent co-insurance, that in essence to you guys is one-hundred percent replacement cost. Okay?
Is that removal too?
There are percentages built in for removal, so some removal would be over and above that. Okay, so this is basically starting from foundation up, and we heard a lot of big numbers just in HVAC tonight. EMC is suggesting about a hundred-and-twelve million dollars if you do one-hundred percent value, one-hundred percent co-insurance. That equates to about two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars a square foot. A hundred percent value, ninety percent co-insurance, that's where you're at right now. For years, we've always done ninety percent co-insurance for the flexibility to keep you out of a to have enough insurance. So, what that in essence says, we're telling you, a hundred percent is a hundred-and-twelve million dollars. We're agreeing to insure at ninety percent of that. So, the ninety percent of full value is slightly over a hundred-and-three million dollars. That's two-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars a square foot. And then another option is deviate from a hundred percent value, going to ninety, but then insuring at ninety percent of that. So, that's gonna get us just slightly above where you are now, ninety-five million dollars versus ninety-two. Everyone with me so far? Okay, so the important information is in that second chart. EMC is saying that the least Avery School District has to increase is that bottom line that I bolded and read. You do need to go to that ninety-five million, six-hundred-and-seven, excuse me, ninety-five million, six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar figure. It's providing about three-and-a-half mil- three-and-a-half million dollars more insurance spread out differently throughout the six buildings. The difficult thing to swallow here is that at your five-thousand-dollar deductible, that's gonna cost an extra nineteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars over and above your bid. Okay? If you want to make this more of a catastrophic policy, you can increase the property deductible from your current five-thousand dollars to ten, and that reduces that nineteen-thousand-dollar additional premium to slightly less than seventeen thousand, sixteen thousand, seven-seventy-five. So, that's the bare minimum. Recommendation two is increasing to how we've insured the district for several years, the hundred percent value, but reducing it ten percent to do the ninety percent co-insurance. So, that'll get our blanket amount to a hundred-and-three million. It will give the district an additional eleven million dollars of coverage, but that's gonna cost nearly twenty-seven thousand dollars more at five-thousand-dollar deductible. If you increase the deductible to ten, then it drops it to about twenty-two thousand dollars. And then recommendation number one, insuring at one-hundred percent across the board. I don't have an extra premium for that. We can easily get that. But we haven't been at that one-hundred percent, one-hundred percent. I think we're dealing with enough increase right now. But if the board wants to know what one-hundred percent across the board is, it wouldn't take much time to get that number. The other thing that I will say, and I did appreciate EMC doing this, we can stair-step this. We can, if the board feels that the twenty-seven thousand or twenty-two thousand dollar additional premium that the way we're insuring the buildings now, the hundred percent of value, at ninety percent co-insurance, if that's not budget-friendly, we can do the bare minimum for this year. Go to the next step next year. But I, we increased it last year for the same reason. Are we gonna be in the same boat next year? I can't tell you. I think we know that costs are gonna continue to go up, but I'm hoping they're not going up as much as they have. So, we can stair-step it. They will allow us to do it, but unfortunately, we will have to do that minimum requirement. Alright, there's the CE class. Questions? Not nearly as exciting as geothermal heating systems and athletic improvements, but unfortunately, something that's pretty important.
So, the minimum required is built into the premium of two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand?
Say, Yenkey.
Yeah, the minimum required for the blanket of the building.
That is not built in. So, we need to add, if you stick with your same deductible, we need to add nineteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars to the two-fifty-two.
I just, I can't see that it makes sense to stay with a five-thousand-dollar deductible when we haven't used it, and you go to that ten-thousand-dollar deductible. It's a lot easier to choke down a ten-thousand-dollar. It's a five-thousand-dollar out-of-cash, out-of-pocket expense, where you're looking at a five-thousand-dollar, basically, savings in the premium of our one year. So, it doesn't make sense to me to stay at that five-thousand-dollar deductible. In my mind, if I'm looking at this, my option would be the recommendation two at the hundred-and-three million, four-hundred-and-ten thousand, two-hundred-and-six, with the additional pre- premium of twenty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars, and a ten-thousand-dollar deductible.
That's what I was thinking, because, right, the cost between five-thousand-dollar deductible and ten-thousand-dollar deductibles, what, roughly five to six thousand dollars, and you're talking, what's your coverage? Yeah, so, I would agree, Shar. I, I think I would look at recommendation two with a ten-thousand-dollar deductible. That would seem to make.
In my mind, it makes the most sense, right?
And that's the one that stuck out to me too. Not that we want to increase deductibles just to increase them, because that's obviously an upfront cost to the district, but the.
You're gaining that back in one-year's premium.
The old days of the way deductibles were handled with insurance, if, they were becoming maintenance contracts. And right now, we want you to tell us where your pain threshold is, when you want your insurance payer to jump in. And to keep the costs down, you guys have to absorb a little bit more of that risk exposure. Now, these are just two suggestions. I don't remember, Sean. Two, three years ago, we were at twenty-five hundred, and we bumped it to five thousand for the same reason. Now, we're talking about maybe going to ten. Well, that's one of the tools that we have to help you guys offset insurance costs, because we have to continually increase building values. Now, can we go higher than ten? Oh, absolutely. We can go to twenty-five, we can go to fifty. But we also have to be reasonable, because things will happen. So, I kinda like to move these deductibles up when we need to.
Yeah, I don't want to see us getting into a situation, I, we just went through it a couple of years ago with our own milk plant. They went through a fire, and the board didn't have enough coverage, and the cost of it was astronomical to just replace. And you're, we're still fighting with insurance companies to get money back, and that's just the way it is. I, I wouldn't. I guess once you have something and you have assets to protect, you have to protect them. But it doesn't make sense to protect them at such a high premium, when you can save that, you can save that deductible in one year's, one year's time.
I think that's the, that's a good observation. Another suggestion that Sean and I talked about, and when you have some time, I would be very interested to know what Kraus Anderson would say per square foot brand-new cost, because contractors know what those exact costs. What we do from an insurance standpoint, we're nibbling around the edges. They're, they're good numbers. But if we're in the ballpark, we're, we're gonna be fine. But if we're way off, we don't want to find out after something.
They get it down pretty, pretty well.
Oh, I was gonna ask, does, does EMC, do they actually have a set dollar that they actually believe that would be a replacement cost? Did they tell you that at all?
No, they don't do it that way, Shar. They give us, I have exact two or three-page reports on each building that goes through different line items and tells me what we, they think it's gonna cost to build the high school brand-new today.
Right.
So, that's what these numbers are.
Okay, that's what, that's what I got. Because each, each insurance company does that a little bit differently.
Correct.
That value that they assign to that.
But on the surface, just knowing what the building costs have been, even with increasing these things, I'm still, I'm hopeful we're very close to where we should be, but I think a K-A number would make me feel better, and I think it would make the board feel better. And if we find we're not as close as we think we are, we obviously have some time to talk about it, because we can make changes anytime we want.
And is that, does that same company, if we said that, hey, our numbers aren't matching with your numbers, we're considerably higher, will they raise that threshold?
They're always, they're always willing to increase it. Or the other way, they're not quite so excited that when we have a reputable general contractor like Kraus Anderson with a little documentation, I'm convinced they would accept that.
I just don't want to get into a situation of the, that they're lowballing a rebuilt cost.
Exactly. Much rather have a little too much than not.
Well, they're obviously not looking at, if we had the destruction of four buildings, that that would even come close to a replacement.
No. And if it's only a one-building loss, Keith, that's the beauty of blanket. I have no worries. I sleep well at night that at eleven-point-three million dollars, we'll have more than enough insurance to put one of the buildings back exactly as we. We probably have enough if two buildings went. Don't give me that smile.
Alright, well, I'll make a motion then that we accept recommendation two as presented.
With the ten-thousand deductible.
With the ten-thousand-dollar deductible.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Alright, motion made and seconded to accept that. And that would include a premium increase of two-hundred-and, two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, and this additional.
Two, two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, fifty-one dollars plus twenty-one thousand, six, six, eight.
Yeah, I mean, two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-nineteen.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. No? No? Nobody here? There you go. I'll go to student insurance. I bet you that won't be quite as bad as this.
Well, what you see on the screen, if you can help us with this, you know, PC fifth, this is our student assurance.
I'll vote aye.
But, well, I can help with this as well. This is a picture of our history in regards to premiums received, benefits paid, and number of claims. In the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, you'll see we only had one claim, whereas, what, four years ago, three years ago, we had twenty-eight claims.
A lot of clumsy kids back in that year.
Well, I was, I wasn't at the high school then, but in my time at high school, there were a couple of dumbbells that had been dropped on feet. And that's not always a good thing. So, this is a, an item that we've used, sometimes fairly often, and sometimes not at all. It's for accidents that occur with students, and things will happen. So, if you want to proceed forward with having student assurance, you need to make a motion to do so. I'll take any questions, or perhaps, Violet, can you have any points of clarity? Perhaps you can chime in?
It's always, you've done this every year. The theory behind the student assurance over the years was as parents, high deductible health plans kicked in, this was an opportunity. So, if a student is injured, they are to, they file it through their own first insurance, and then this is secondary. So, this isn't an all just encompassing insurance for that. It should go through the parents first. But the idea was, when those parents' policies were starting to be high deductible, that this would help, maybe, in some way. That was kind of always kind of our theory behind offering it. I, I don't know if I have a, a yes or a no, just that's why we had done it and continued to in the past. There are districts that don't have anything offering like this. They have a different philosophy, possibly.
Twilight, am I incorrect in saying that the premium would remain the same for the next school year? That's not on here, but the twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four school year would be the same as the twenty-two, two-ninety?
Yes.
This is any student, and this, this is what you, for your sports injuries and all of that.
And playground, or, yes.
You'd probably get more from playground than you do from sports, actually.
Yeah, I move that we move ahead with the student assurance services, again, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
And two seconds. Steve, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Vote. No? There we go. Alright. Thank you. And now, we'll move to our salary increases. We'll start with the support staff.
Okay, well, I would like to take these one at a time. That gives at least four folks the ability to weigh in. Is, as you know, relationships with members of our staff put some of us in a position to have to abstain from the vote. In this case, Steve with support staff, and Dale with certified staff. And splitting it up will help us hear some of that. What you see, what you see here for the support staff scale is a re-envisioned scale. What we have done is moved everybody forward, but we've moved away from nine levels. This scale is thirty levels, and here's the reason why. This allows us to move every single support staff forward now, in every single year, until they get all the way through their thirtieth level. And that's gonna be a rare individual. They'll have to be here for a very long time to get all the way through. You don't get bumps. You get bumps every year here in the present scale. You move from year five to year ten, to year ten to year fifteen, as you'll see on the screen, all the way up through twenty, um, twenty-five before you get a bump. And you'll see that, for instance, between level six and level seven, if you were a para educator, in five years, you're moving forward a quarter. If you go back up to the other proposed scale, take any period of five years, go, for instance, from level L to level P. You went from nineteen-seventy-five to twenty-seventy-five. You're moving forward a dollar, as opposed to twenty-five cents. This is, I've got a couple of features to it. It starts people higher, it ends them higher, and it's higher at every point between the beginning and the end. We've got to be more competitive with certi- with support staff in order to be able to retain, hire and retain our employees. A couple of other things that it does. One, it takes off the table years of experience. Say, for instance, we're hiring a secretary. Someone applies who we want to hire is at thirteen years of experience as a church secretary. Are we dropping them in at level A, seventeen dollars? If that's our hold, they're not coming, we can put them wherever we want. And we don't have to say they're at level I, and that's year eight, and it's really their first year. We stop tracking all this years of experience stuff, because the reason we track years of experience is the same reason we track anniversary dates, and they're hired on July seventeenth. So, now we gotta track not only what year they're in, but what is their anniversary date. And this scale, we can drop them wherever we want, and we can move them forward every single year. And everyone can rest assured, they're moving forward every single year. And that allows us to retain our employees, because they know there's gonna be growth, and it allows us to attract employees, because we're starting hiring. And you're gonna see this scale again and again and again, is to be competitive. We're gonna have to keep moving forward. Bus drivers move forward, fellows, custodian, school nutrition, paras, and secretaries all move forward under this proposal. And you'll see in your, your folder, it gives you an actual number of dollars that it costs us to do this. The support staff total amount of dollars, and this is all the employee groups that I just mentioned, is approximately ninety-six thousand. I can't say with certainty it's ninety-six, because we still have staff who went up to and including today. We don't know if someone's gonna resign, and if they do, we don't know who we're gonna hire and what we're gonna do. We could never know that. It's gonna be, we'll be targeted today. But ninety-six thousand dollars is what you would be asked to put forward into the support staff scale. I'll take questions, and you can sort of make comments if you have.
So, have you identified where everybody would be starting?
Yes.
And the question I have is, if you've got somebody that's in those gap years, let's say they're at year fourteen, are you starting them at the ten, or are you starting them at the fourteen?
We're moving them forward from where they're presently at to next year, then they're a ladder. And from there, they're moving forward every single year. And from there, they're moving forward every single year after that. We've identified everybody. What we're going to do this week, Twyla and Becky and I have scheduled some time to relook at every one of our employees because some are in those gap years. They're moving to fifteen. We don't want to put them on a spot next year where they went backwards. We want to put them in a spot where they're moving forward and then they continue to move forward. Every employee has to be looked at in order to do that.
So did I hear you say that you are, everybody's moving forward?
Yes.
But they might not be, if they're in their fourteenth year, they might not be on the fourteenth spot on the scale?
We're going to give them a letter. The fourteen means nothing anymore.
Okay, okay.
We're giving them a letter and we're going to say, for instance, they're in their fourteenth year and by I in this book, by I in this scale, go to the next scale. In the fourteenth year, they would be at level seven. So let's just go up to the top and say, just pretend, say, what was the level seven wage?
Nineteen twenty-five.
Nineteen twenty-five. So you go to the scale. They're not going to be at nineteen twenty-five. We're going to put them at nineteen fifty and from that point forward, their letter is K until next year, then it's out. And every year, they can move forward a quarter. And the benefit of that, if you are going to stay and be a loyal employee and work here for years and years and years, you're going to get growth every year. Remember the old scale, in five years, you're moving forward a quarter. That's a typical year. This scale moves you forward a whole dollar. I know that a whole dollar doesn't mean much, but it's a lot better than a quarter. And remember, the scale before that was year one, year two, year four, year fifteen, and year twenty-five. In ten years, you move forward twenty-nine cents in the old, old scale. So this is us seeking to be competitive and also clearing up some administrative nightmares in the district office by tracking years of experience and years and anniversary dates. It moves everyone forward. Is it perfect? No, it's not. Is it affordable in our budget? Yes, it is. So let me talk about that for a second. The agreed upon by any a budget, we said we're going to wait for the budget. We're going to wait for the budget. We're going to wait for the budget. We've got ourselves a budget. Sort of happened like in a split fast life. We've got a three hundred and twenty-five dollar increase per pupil, which is in our revenue limit, about four hundred thousand more dollars. And at the end of this, you'll see all of the employee group moving forward is four hundred and four thousand dollars. It's money in and money out. And it's money well invested because it's for our staff to be able to keep them here. If we don't pay our people, they're not going to stay. That's reality. So we can't afford it. There are plenty districts that I have knowledge of through today of the thirty-nine and CISA eleven that have settled, that they've actually taken board action and moved forward. In nearly every single one of them, there's one exception, is between two and five percent, most between three and four percent. This growth for support staff and total dollars is about a three percent move. For certain individuals, it'll be more than that because we're moving the beginning of the scale up. So there's a greater percentage growth for some of those folks. So it's about a three percent.
That's, that's unfortunate that it's only three twenty-five when, when I went to that CISA eleven, whatever it was, a few months back, and they were hoping for fifteen hundred.
Over two years. It's six fifty over two years, which is not nearly where the fifty, I, I'm with you. It's disappointing.
Can I?
Not unusual, but it's, you know.
Can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
Can I make a motion to approve the support staff compensation amount of changes?
Yes, you can.
I'll even second it.
All right. The motion is made and seconded to accept the differences or the increases in levels for the support staff. All those in favor say aye.
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 Vote. No? There we go.
And?
Just looked at I didn't.
Yeah. You abstained.
He is recusing himself.
I don't know, say he's abstained. I know he's abstained.
Yeah.
He's invited him, maybe.
No. She said that. All right. Let's go on to our certified staff.
Okay. In certified staff world, this is a scale that you've seen probably at least a half dozen times. And if you're on the listening sessions as Dale and Shar, they've seen it probably two dozen times. We've been talking about this and talking about, talking about this for the last two years. This is the third level, or the third year of a three-year plan of growth that Jessica's here, Jessica and I have met with certified staff dozens of times, and we've seen this before. So we're in the highlighted column twenty-three, twenty-four, moving us forward to that new wage. The total cost of the increase of, of moving the scale forward is a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. The natural growth, and here's what I mean by natural growth. Let's just look at the scale as you see it right now. If you're moving from E three at fifty-five thousand six hundred dollars to F one at fifty-nine thousand six hundred dollars, scale didn't affect that. It's just you moving forward by professional development. That's increased a four thousand dollars. That natural growth is a hundred and three thousand. So it's a hundred and eighty-four plus a hundred and three. That's how you get those numbers. And again, this is not always going to be entirely accurate. We had a resignation notice that person this afternoon. So I don't know what the new person's going to be. It could be less wage, it could be more wage, it could be the same wage. This is what we know of as of right now today without that resignation this afternoon. So this is the third year of growth. And Jessica and I have already had a conversation, what does year four, five, and six look like? We've got to keep our eyes on beginning wage, got to keep our eyes on the E category, the D E category. That's an instructor that's been here for approximately eight to ten years. Got to keep an eye there. And we've got to keep an eye on the top end of the scale. In order to remain competitive, especially now with the shortage of teachers, we have got to continue to look at salary. And this is an opportunity for us to move forward. Most districts are starting somewhere between forty-two and forty-five. We're at forty-three. Most districts are entering, ending between seventy and eighty. We're ending on this particular proposal at seventy-seven. So we're seeking to be competitive. Questions or comments you may have?
I don't have any.
Great. I thought maybe you and Dale would have, who were in those meetings.
I agree. Yeah, I, I think we've talked about this once already, after we came back from the committee meeting. And I think we've kind of, the board has kind of hung out on this for the last three years that we've kind of done this, that this has kind of been the plan moving forward. And this is kind of what we've promised them moving forward. And so being good stewards of keeping our word that this has been built into the budget, I think that this is probably not, doesn't require a lot of discussion, that this is what we said we would do.
This is a growth of three percent as well.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yes.
Yes.
What it is. I'd, I'd like to make a motion.
Yep.
Well, if I could, if I could just make a comment first, that, in, to Shar's comments, that's absolutely right. We talked, probably back in March, and I'm looking at Jessica, but probably March. And I think we shared this maybe in April. We're waiting for the budget to come in. So, you know, I'm, I guess I'm happy we were able to get it to where these numbers are at. You know, would've been nice to be even higher, but all things considered, take what you can get from the state. So, yeah, I would, I'm happy where it turned, turned out. And I will just make a comment that I will abstain from voting on this as well.
Okay. And Joe, you want to make a motion to approve that?
Yeah, I first, again, my con- my other comment would be, Sean said that they'd be getting three percent over the next three years. This is what I believe in the past.
Three percent each of those years. This last year was approximately three percent as well.
I think it's really, you know, we have to stick to what we say.
Sure. And there's a district that moved forward eight percent, but that same district's been frozen for four years.
Yeah.
So three percent times three is, by my math, nine. So that's even better.
Yeah, I really think that the district has done a good job here of trying to honor our employees and reward them accordingly is what we can with the budget. And I think our employees in return has done great understanding of that as well. So.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the certified staff compensation benefits.
I'll second that.
Sure, I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote. There we go.
The administrative staff, there isn't a scale, if you will. It's a wage. And what I have had conversation with district team, because there's building principals, director, people's services are sort of in one category of administrative team. And then there's the others outside of that. Jeff sits in that category, whether that be Ryan Pease or George, whoever it is. All of those folks, basically what I did is took their existing number and times it by one point zero three and three percent for that as well, and you get your, generate your new wage. That grand total number of dollars moving forward is twenty thousand three hundred and eighty-eight. Now, there are some big swings in there. For instance, if you have a director and a physician leave after fifteen years here and move someone in in their first year, that's not going to be a three percent increase. That's going to be a dip of ten, twelve, fifteen percent. Because one was here for fifteen years and one's been here for one. So those ups and downs, that's going, that drives that administrative number down significantly. For the, in essence, the sixteen people is twenty thousand dollars. So that would be the third item for salary growth.
Move to approve the administrative staff three percent increase with an increase of twenty thousand three hundred and eighty-eight as well.
Okay. Hannah, second.
Second.
Dale. All those in favor say aye.
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 Vote. No? There we go.
And thank you for much more than just, I know we're talking about a lot of money here, but thank you for leaving legacies with these kids more than anything for me. And, I mean, you can only be paid so much. I wish you were paid like doctors and lawyers.
Well, they are doctors and lawyers. They take care of the wounded and they enforce the penalties.
Nice try.
You're the judge, aren't you?
Well, I don't think so.
No. Everybody just cares about the kids so much. Yes.
Yeah. Good staff. They deserve it.
All right. Next, listening sessions.
I tried to pair this back for directive and tried to eliminate some of the dates. So every date you'll see on here is an actual board meeting date. And then dropped in strategically, if I could, an item of presentation that would fit a narrative of what the district's up to. For instance, the athletic facilities proposal, that certainly fits. We're talking about it here tonight. The budget, we do an annual budget, annual meeting and a budget hearing in September. School calendar, we approve the school calendar in December and January. Folks can chime in. Standardized testing, I know that's a crowd pleaser, but it is an inordinate amount of time to talk about standardized testing. That is a ton of time. That forward exam window for third through eighth and tenth is an enormous number of kids and an enormous amount of time. So people, difficult to handle on that. We already do curriculum in the spring, February, March, April. This is an opportunity for folks to weigh in on what they see there. Enrollment staffing is a march kind of a thing. We know our numbers by then generally, and we know what our staff needs to be. And then we are actually up upon a new, new strategic plan. Because our plan we presently have is twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. Well, we'll be in twenty twenty-five before we know it. So twenty-five to twenty-thirty, we'll start talking about what our priorities are. So this is a, again, a re-imagine version of what you've seen a couple of times before. If you go to the top of the screen, you'll see what the timeline on an evening looks like, a presentation by district staff. It may not take thirty minutes. It may take ten. I don't know. And then a listening session, folks can chime in on that particular topic. Or if they have something else to share, they can. The only rule of the road that they will need to know is if it's not on the agenda, you really can't do much with it. If it's on the agenda, you can engage with them and then some. So if folks want to show up and talk about athletics, you can have that full conversation right here. If we go past seven, go past seven. If it's something we need to talk about, we talk about it. Then the regular board meeting is at seven.
Can the board meeting start early if we're done with all the other stuff?
Sure. Doesn't matter to me.
Has it come?
Otherwise, I say the start time was the right.
We have to list the posting as such.
Yes. You'd have to say.
You can't say seven and then start at that six thirty.
Start the regular meeting at six thirty if the other stuff goes longer.
Well, you simply stayed on the agenda. Following the listening session, we will begin our regular.
You do that during the annual budget hearing, meetings in September and say, yeah.
I appreciate your, your sentiments and trying to put money back in the vein for everybody. I totally get it.
I think it's a lot of speech from you.
I know.
It'll be short.
No, no.
You can see how well that worked out right now.
Some of our teams is playing on Monday night football. I understand.
It's getting close to my bedtime right now.
It's summer. It's summer. Take it easy there, big boy.
Yeah.
So those are the listening sessions, a re-imagine. And I'm not sure how you feel about it, but that was my best shot.
I like it.
I like it. I like it much better.
Yep.
Yeah, much better.
We'll try it.
Is that an action that we have to do or is it?
It's an action.
So I make a motion to accept the changes as per limited.
Yep.
I'll second it.
So all those in favor say aye.
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 Vote. No? There we go. How about personnel?
Um, I would like to talk about these in closed session.
We can talk about them in closed session and then come back and vote on it in open session.
Yeah, I would make it down.
Let's do that. Do that.
Okay.
All right. I'll take and entertain a motion going to closed session, considering employment commotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in order to take personal action pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen twenty-eight five, paragraph one, paragraph C.
So move.
Shar.
So is this for, is this for everything?
This is.
Our, our closed session would encompass this and then everything else that we have on the agenda for closed session. And then we would just have to take a motion to go back into open session and then vote on this.
On personnel. And, and, I mean, but since people are here and there's a retirement on here and that person means a lot to us, we, we, if we wanted to say good stuff about them, we'd have to wait till later.
Well, we, if, do you have something prepared now?
I can talk about our retirement person if you'd like.
If you have something prepared, we can certainly.
Well, this was late in the game. This, this happened on June twenty-third.
Right.
So I can tell you what she's authored, and that person is Shirley Tilton.
Yeah.
So I will share with you, she's intending to retire effective August twenty-first. This is what she has authored. I would like to thank the Amory School District for the years I have worked for them. I have made many friends with the staff and love working around the kids. Moving on to the next journey of my life, I will always remember all of you and wish you the best of memories. I typically do this at a retirement gathering, but I'll say this now. The thing that I've always been, always so appreciative about Shirley is she has such a great sense of humor. And even with tragedy, she has a great sense of humor. Shortly after her return, if you remember, she was the one that basically lost her thumb in a folding table in the cafeteria. And if you want to know what that looked like, talk to Paula Johnson. It was quite a scene. And she came back to work after many surgeries. And shortly after she returned, we got a picture in her email of Tom, who also had a thumb injury, and Shirley thumb wrestling, which was awesome. I'm not sure if it occurred and who won, but I think both of you were very challenged in this area. So that's my sentiments. I know that Tom's worked with her and I know if George, if George is not here, so Tom would be one.
Shirley is just a gem. She always has a big smile. She likes to come in and just ask you how your day was. She cares so much for the kids. She's always going out of her way for the students. If a student needs something and she sees them, she's going to go out of her way to try and help them. She'll kind of come onto a lot of kids and say, I, how you doing? I saw the teacher out. I think I can help you get some shoes. We'll figure out how to help you with anything. She's just been an outstanding employee and a good friend working with her. But, you know, she, she cares about the kids more than anything, and that's what's, what's mattered most. So we're going to miss her greatly.
Same. I, I just, I don't know. I mean, we have good people in every aspect of, of running this school. I just have never really met anybody as upbeat and positive as Shirley is. I talked to her, I called her right after her, her thumb accident. And I actually spoke to her that night. And she's like, I'm okay. It's, it's fine. And she's like laughing about how Paula had to take her and it was her first, you know, days on the job. And, and she's like, but it's gonna be fine, Shar. It's gonna be fine. And she just went out of her way for those kids at the middle school. There was so many, and she was, she was that second shift, jammed her there for a lot of years. And she was more than willing to help anybody set up for an athletic event that we were going to have there, a booster event that we were going to have. She watched over those kids that were left there at night after, if they had to stay after for sporting practices or they were there, come back from a field trip. She would make sure that those kids all made it home, that she was there watching over them until somebody came to get them. And she's truly going to be missed. This was a, this was a hard one for me personally to hear that she was retiring. And, but now she's going to have all the time in the world to can and cook and do her thing. She's a, she's a real genuine one, that one. She's got a, a heart bigger than her mouth bucket. We're going to miss her.
Good. Good to hear. Yes.
Thank you for doing that.
Of course.
Yeah.
I graduate, my wife and I graduated with her son Maya.
Oh, okay.
And, and. And, uh, and you're right, she absolutely, you know, attributes of humility are just awesome.
She is awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a motion going closed. I have a second.
Good news is she did say she's.
I say aye.
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 All right. We're in closed. Thank you, lunch.